Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town and Row Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for April 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I'm Michael Riley, the chairman. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, interior of our 32 stands, a nation under God, indivisible, without any end.
Thank you very much. We'll next call the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic Smeruglio, alternate commissioner.
Dominic Benetia, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Leanne Brosi, commissioner.
Robert Westland, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Terrence Stroud, recording secretary.
Thank you very much. I think we need to seat one member tonight. Commissioner Condon, who might that be? It is Dominic Smeruglio. Okay, Commissioner Smeruglio. Okay, so now, next is general public participation. This is the time we invite the public to participate and to address the commission on issues not on the agenda tonight. The two applications on the agenda tonight will have separate public participation periods for that. So this time, it's to talk about something that's not on the agenda, anything you want to talk about in town, planning to planning or doing. If anyone would like to participate, please raise your hand if you're tonight. Or if online, please press your raised hand button. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to our first public hearing, SCP 2024-02, 205 Spring Hill Road. This is continued from 3:21:24, and Catherine, do you have any new exhibits?
We do. There's a letter from the neighbor received March 22nd, 2024, not in favor of the application and engineering comments and bond estimate from town engineer De Mayo. And that is it.
My name is Luke Morrow. I am a project manager with solely engineering. It's at 501 Main Street, Hickory Lane. Professional engineer in the state of Connecticut and also a professional traffic operations engineer. Back again for you tonight, I'll be the applicant owner who is GP 205 Spring Hill LLC, to kind of go through some of the comments, concerns, and questions we had received a couple meetings ago. We did request to continue from last meeting, too, because we had to get weapons approval. We've since received weapons approval, favorable vote for weapons, and hope to close everything up here today. So just quickly to coordinate everyone again with the site. We have Spring Hill Road over here on the south side of property. Your familiar reference site, it's a trauma printing company, is a slant in a building, kind of in the middle. We're proposing 30,000 plus square foot warehouse building on the north side of the site. So just to address some of the comments and questions we received last time, and we will be sure to always interrupt instead of plans for any of the conditions approval that we received tonight. So just to highlight that you've kind of been a blubber, and I know it's a little bit difficult to see, so I'll go through with everything. Some of the changes, revisions that we add to the plans based on staff and neighbor comments. So there was a recommendation or request to consider a gate for security purposes to the rear of the site. So we started swinging it over here to block off the front from the back portion for security reasons. I'll show you detail of that in a second. We're also proposing a six-foot-high white vinyl fence for some screening and view concerns that were brought up by the neighbors at the last meeting. So that will have a whole northern property line of sites. There's a rock that will bring all that will be just located just on our side of the property with the rock all three days. Just a couple details of what would be typical, I'm not saying that you're going to need exactly, but things to be installed. Be solid, six-foot-high white vinyl panel fence along the whole property on the north side, as you can see here. And then a metal traffic gate, something to this effect, like a roller or swing gate, some of that. These just be too large to kind of accomplish the driveway here. So swing gate with like a knock box and the fire department will get into an access if needed to. There was a request for us to cut a section. I know some of the commissioners said they were going to take a look up at Hickory, I mean, I assume some of you did that, I did as well. See, you know, what you can do with some of the concerns for the neighbors, especially 27 Hickory here at the south side of the street. So just walk everybody through it quickly, as best as we could off of GIS we are able to pull. Finished floor elevation of the house here, 27 Hickory Lane. And they had a section, the section you see here is about 225 feet. To the edge where our where our building will be located. So finished floor elevation of our building is about 17 feet lower than the finished floor of 27 Hickory Lane. It's some GIS information. You can see the property slopes down from the front of the house. Right away in Hickory Lane, other right away in Hickory Lane on the other side of the cul-de-sac itself. And then, as best as we could, we tried to note where the existing tree line is located in terms of the section. So if you were to draw a line straight down, essentially the tree line starts about here. You come onto our property over here, which is on the left side of the, you know, property line you see here. And then the tree line, as much as we can leave on our property, would come to here, the existing tree line. So that's about 60 feet or so of natural vegetation that we're going to do our best to try to leave in its in its natural state to try to buffer that, you know, in 27 Hickory Lane as best as we can. We're also proposing, it's a little bit difficult to see, you can see the six-foot-high vinyl fence that will help if you get closer to kind of screening the view of the building. You know, if you're down here on Hickory Lane at the car, and then two rows of evergreen shrubs, it'll be at least 12 foot high at times. So when we asked, why do we cut the section over here, not over here, it's a little bit closer? Reason for that is the further you get, the further south, if you follow my mouth, south you go, the more natural vegetative buffer you have from this corner of the house to the building itself. So we cut the section where we thought you'd have the greatest view corridor, which happens to fall in line with where the front door basically is, the steps is front door to the house here. So that's why we cut on the first set of J and E here. I took, this is not my phone, this is Google Earth phone, but I did also go out there myself and take a look at existing conditions. This is the neighbor's property. You can see here's the driveway here on the left-hand side. Understanding it is an open lawn here, and you can kind of see the rock wall and that. So the goal here, we need to maintain as much of this vegetation in this area as we possibly can. And then if you can imagine, along the line here, it'll be a six-foot-high vinyl fence. And then over the top of that, in time, you would have some double row of evergreen shrubs that, you know, 12-foot high kind of planting, but they do grow, you know, a foot or so here. So every time it goes a little further, you know, screen as you from the property at 27. I took another shot here, looking up Hickory Lane, and this is looking north. You can kind of see, you know, other than neighbor here at 27, there seems to be an obstructed view for the warehouse building itself, for the rest of the, for the rest of the neighbors, at least of all. On the west side of the street, and you know, just along the east side of the street as well. So I just wanted to go talk through, you know, a few, few things. So like I said, the building itself at the closest point is going to be, it's over 200 feet or so from the closest corner of Hickory Lane. We can't put the building closer than 50, 50 feet to the property line. We're going to leave as much of this natural vegetative buffer as you can, and also compensate some of the more barriers we can install of the evergreens as well to kind of help boost that buffer even more. Let's see, as far as there was concern with questions in regards to seeing cars in the parking lot, or like fixtures, whatnot. This parking lot is about, like I said, it's going to be 18 feet below the finished floor of the house here. With this, with the screening plantings, with the natural buffer and the fence, I don't think you're really going to be able to see any cars down here, it's just so far below the bumpers. And the kind of stuff planted a lot to be there. You know, we don't feel you're going to see, you're not going to get any headlights or anything to that. The fence itself definitely stop any headlights from, you know, crossing the property line onto Hickory Lane, as it has been sit down before. As far as the site lighting goes, site light poles are about 20 feet high or so. There was a question about full cutoff. Full cutoff, we looked into what that means in this specific instance. It means, I'll try not to bore you with specifics, but you cannot see the light less than 10-degree angles from the horizontal. So you have to be basically a couple feet below the elevation of where that light fixture is to see it. Considering this house is 18, 20 feet higher, it is unlikely that you receive natural light fixture from the pole itself. However, Catherine had recommended, our management piece at the commission, we can certainly install an aftermarket sign plate for glare, so that there's no question, no glare, you know, escape of the property lines, so you can't see that light source from the fixture itself. We're going to do that as well. There was a couple, a few other couple of comments or quest, questions that we talked through. I went back and discussed with developer. They did want to reemphasize, it is a spec build right now, there are still no tenants. They are actually remarketing it, if you pass by the site, you'll see, I think it includes white steam signs out there. So they are trying to market it, it does make it easier to market once it is approved and construction can start. But there are no tenants identified. With that, you don't know exactly, obviously, what type of product is going to be stored in the building. So, you know, or what the operations might be. So we would request that there's no specific restrictions put on ours. Operations or materials might be installed in the building. Direct everyone's attention to section 4.3.2 of the regs. In any industrial zone, there are a number of restrictions and requirements to comply with in terms of noise, vibration, air pollution, glare, heat, hazardous waste, materials, fire, fire and explosive materials as well. All have to be reviewed by the fire marshal, all have to be reviewed by the building inspector, all have to be reviewed by planning and zoning before they can run through and get permits to be shot and tenant the building with anything specific. So talking with Catherine, we were happy once we get an idea of who the tenant may be to ship types of materials from operations with staff, and everyone's aware of. But nothing that's not permitted to not be allowed inside the building on that site. You know, in terms of, you know, zoning, is it zoned industrial, there are setbacks. There are setbacks along residential neighbors to try to ease the impact of the site itself. But the site, it is a, it's compliant with the regs. Everything is in accordance with both recommendations. I did go back and try to find if I can do what we want to be sub-stated, and don't have any nuisances that may, you know, that may affect the neighbors. That's the greatest extent that we can do that. There's no other questions or comments, or I guess we'll take questions and comments, but that's all I have for you guys for now.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll go to the commissioners for questions now, starting on my right, Commissioner Smeruglio.
My only real concern with this project is the screening for Hickory. I did take a ride down there. At this time of year, it's pretty sparse, you know, obviously that picture, it grows in. So the natural buffer is really only good from May to October, roughly. I like where you're going with it, with the, with the evergreens. Are those going to be Norway spruce or green giants? Did you know?
I think so. It is a mix of, that's the market thing, probably, but the white spruces and hammocks, eastern hammocks.
I mean, the green giants are a great, I mean, buffer, and I did, I did call some local nurseries. They do sell with special order up to 20, 20-foot, 22-foot. Now, they're, they are very expensive and they're hard to plant. But since the building is so tall, I don't know, that's what I would recommend, anyway.
We, we, I don't know, like defer to landscape. We try to stay away from the giant arbor by, but if it's something the commission we can certainly consider that.
Doesn't have to be exactly that, that species, but 12-foot sounds big, but for this building, it may not really help many.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not pretending to be a landscape architect. I think the larger the tree, the more difficult it might be for it to take order.
Yes.
You don't want it better than two, because then, you know, you need a larger disturbance, and the larger the wall we're disturbing, the more natural vegetation. So there's very good balance.
Yeah, they, they did mention that in the nursery. And the other thing was, last time you said there was, you were thinking about removing some of the windows that face Hickory?
Yeah, so we, I ran that idea back, by the developer and architect. They prefer to leave that for natural light reasons, those windows are 20 feet high on the building in terms of people looking through the windows and seeing, I can see the Hickory Lane, but, you know, that's in that case, it wouldn't happen because they're so high on the building. But they want to keep in character with the windows, it's showing a way to precise, they don't want to see that naturally.
Thank you, I'm good.
Well, right now you have no tenant.
No tenants, correct, it's a spade. You know, they, yes, they can be separated into three, it's, it's, it's set, the grids of the column are set so that they can divide it up into three spaces for warehouse space.
Did you look into moving some parking spots away from that?
So we, a couple, a couple concerns with that. We do have the last roll of paper over here. So if we were to remove anything, I might be able to move one or two spots, but in order for that moving space to get in and out, I can't reach that, even though.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking more along the back.
Along the back, right there? I mean, we can, we can remove the one space at the top of the corner, move it or relocate it that we're having to park exactly, or, that we have a special, in order to have the time of spaces to travel. So the other issue, let's see if it's a setback to turn off here. We are, we're getting to within three or four feet of the building setback corner, where we can't have any parking closer to that, so I can, if it appears to the commission, we can remove one or two parking spaces here. Relocate them over here, that's probably about as best as we can do. But that, we can certainly, that's the issue.
And that would be not just removing the painted lines, but actually what?
Yes, removing paint.
Yeah, I, I would like that.
Oh, that's it, Catherine. You're accessing this from Trumbull? Well, who's going to respond if there's a fire or something that?
Time is up.
They're going to have to go through Trumbull to get to it?
Well, it's public right away, yeah, spring.
Is the town was aware of that?
Yes.
You don't have an issue with it?
No, I talked to the fire marshal just about general items, one, including the fact that it's an industrial warehouse facility and what capacity do we put restrictions on what's being stored there? He said that, you know, based on what the use is when it comes into the building department, he'll have a better understanding where in the fire code that goes to, but he does have very specific things. And he says industrial buildings, they do spot checks and things on that. We talked about access to it from the town of Monroe for emergency access. We talked about the gate, actually, in particular, to see if they were, had any opinions on that. They said that they would accept a gate if the commission did request it. However, it would need to have some sort of key pattern, a knocks box on it, which they're in agreement to, to be able to provide, but yes, they're where they go back there. They also actually made the comment that they have issues back there as it is, because it's kind of a vacant lot in Monroe. So there is some illegal trespassing that happens, kids going out, having small parties and things of that nature there. So from a, from a safety and monitoring standpoint, they actually were happy with the idea of it being developed in a way that would have lighting and security lighting and things like that, and deter some of that behavior.
Okay, so they don't have a problem going to Trumbull?
No.
Police department either? Either one?
I know fire does not, because we specifically talked about access, but at the moment, my understanding is emergency, when they have to deal with complaints and the issues in the rear of that anyway, and Monroe has to access it, yeah, they go through Trumbull.
That's, he answered, he answered the question about the about the screen.
I'm okay with your existing buffering plan. At the end of the day, number 27 is going to be able to see this, especially in the winter, that's, that's going to happen. Acting like it isn't. I also am in favor of getting rid of that window. You know, I don't think that, I don't, that's a big concession to make in order to kind of appease the neighbors. And what has been done with the dumpster situation? Remember, there was only, the pad was only able to house two dumpsters in the fire plan?
We're still showing, we're still showing two dumpsters, based on what the developer thinks that they're required, but condition approval, if you want to have their dump, so you can.
For three units?
We're like, yeah.
You have three dumpsters?
Yeah, that's fine, there's space for it.
Otherwise, you get garbage collection on the sides and everything else.
Yeah, that's fine, we can, we can agree to that.
So between the window and the dumpster, I mean, I'm good with the rest of it.
When you just look specific, when you say, there's a few windows, you're talking about just a couple of windows through this corner?
The high windows?
Yes.
That are, that back high window, that was potentially going to be shining light?
So we have windows here along the back?
No.
So the request is to remove all, all the?
Correct. Maybe there could be something done for skylights or whatever to try to get natural light in the building? That's all.
I have a few questions, comments. I agree with Rob and I think Ryan regarding the light situation, the window situation. I am against having those lights in the other windows in the back. I know it's something specifically the neighbors were concerned about, and seeing as though this does meet the regulations and, you know, building is going to be seen, I would like it to be as less intrusive as possible on them. So no light, I think the skylights are actually a really good idea. I don't build buildings, but sounds good. I also just want to, if you can do me a favor and pull up the Google map of the cul-de-sac, I just want to go over the screening one more time. I did drive down there and I agree with.
It's one here?
No, like from, actually like from Google, where you see like the trees, no, keep going. Where you're like driving down the street and you see the trees. Yeah, okay. So can you just show me in this picture where exactly the driveway or the parking lot will be? So if I'm driving down Hickory?
So let me, let me just switch back and forth.
Okay. I'm very visual, so thank you.
Yeah, so, so Hickory Lane over here is, is kind of covered with the trees out here. So call this the bottom of Hickory Lane. So the event, so the pavement of the ball, if you will, of Hickory Lane would be aligned with this row of parking spaces here. The drive aisle, the rest of the parking, and the remainder of the building would be further west.
Okay, and what's, what's screening do we, do you have for right in front of those parking spots? Was that fence just for the building or is that for the parking?
The fence is a full width of the.
Okay.
So you can, it's kind of hard to see, we have our, our fence line here. But so there's going to be a fence line from property corner, up here to property corner behind the wall. We have, I'm naturally trying to show the best we can, this little bubbling line is the natural vegetative buffer. We don't have to do any grading past that limit. And then the double row, whatever it means, you can see here. And then some, and then some desertive flower and trees.
And is the fence also going to be coming down the side of the building? Like, so when they're in their driveway leaving, is there going to be a fence separating their driveway from this parking lot area? Or is it the fence only going to be against the road, if that makes sense?
So, so the fence is only here against the road. And, and the reason we're not doing anything over here is because there's an access easement back there. You can kind of see it right out over here. There's an access easement, I'm not sure if it's in favor of the town of Monroe from Hickory Lane into both 205 and 207 Spring Hill Road. So we're, we're trying not to block off, because if we do, then you can't get access through there. It's, there is 15 feet on the other side of property. So we're putting the fence back up, you know, as far as we can, so we don't block off that access.
I mean, if it was possible, I would let, I don't know how the homeowners feel like, but I would like some kind of fencing along there too, just for privacy and just for privacy and security reasons, but I didn't know there was a setback, so, but if we could do that, I would like that. And just, I don't know if anyone's here, if I don't know, I have the right house number from 28 Hickory Lane. I know you showed a picture that it, it looked like the view was pretty. The trees are full right here.
Yeah.
So in the winter, though, that tree's dead. So the view coming down the street is, you're going to look straight on that building as well. So what kind of buffering could we do for the house on that side?
So.
Maybe here, but I'm just going to speak for them.
Yeah, so, well, so the house is over here, right on the
Yeah.
on the west side of the street. So we have, so there's this natural buffer planting. And I don't think I have Google street view looking down on the page here. But there is, you know, that house is, I'll call it 300 feet or so away. So there is 300 feet of wooded area between that house. And then this is, remember, this is public open space by the town of Monroe, so no one's going to do any development over here. And then, you know, and then same screen fence and double row of green plantings over there as well. So the best I can, the best view I think I have is this area, this wooded area over here, I might have it.
I just, I drove down there and just didn't seem very, it was very sparse, the woods are not very dense at all to me.
So this, so this.
Yeah, I saw right through them. So it just, it was very, there's not a lot of buffer there.
I, I all agreed from, from the end of Hickory Lane, but I'm not sure you could see through all of this.
It was pretty sparse. I have, I brought my wrong phone with me, but I had pictures. But that's, that's my, no other questions or comments.
Commissioner Brosi?
Yeah, so this is, so you're not going to put this building up until you get a tenant?
Their, their, the goal would be to, I mean, there's listing bids for the site right now. So the goal would be a spec build, they would build it, the shell, and then, and then you should go out with racking, ready to, once there was a tenant lined up for it. But, but, but the, the idea would be yes, to.
It's going to have drains in this building, any drains in the floor?
There's not, there's no drains proposed right now. We haven't gotten through any type of detailed billing sign. If it is, it's going to have to get treated via septic. But there's no, there's no, we're not, we're not envisioning any, any internal buildings. Just, just, just a comment for the, for the restaurant.
You're not, you don't plan on putting any drains in there?
No, no. Nothing. Nothing, no, no light hoses to wash anything off or anything like that. So that's something.
No, but I'm saying you didn't know if you're gonna be storing chemicals there or anything like that, right?
That's, that's not.
That's not gonna happen? Well, I'm just saying, because you'd have to have some kind of, something to contain that, okay? So you're not gonna do any of that?
Well, and it has.
It is an industrial building.
It's an industrial building. That's, we don't, we don't know the tenants or anybody, it might be, you know, powers of the town for anything that's gonna be.
Okay. What colors is the building gonna be?
Uh, it's like a light gray, natural gray town building.
And the roof is gonna be white?
No, it's a gray. It's also gray. Just, it's just that kind of reflection, but it's also a great town roof as well. Just a natural.
Okay. How, is the lighting gonna be, it's gonna be lit all the time? It's gonna be on motion detectors? How's it gonna be at nighttime?
Uh, well, we could put it on a light, we could, we can do the, there's three light poles in the parking lot, we could put them on a nighttime circuit, security circuit. I just don't, I, I don't know what the activity is gonna be like in the building itself. So if it's off, if, if there's no activity going on, we could put them on a night circuit just for purpose.
You're not looking for how about hours of operation on this building?
We're, 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 we're requesting no restriction of hours of operations. We don't really intend maybe. But there's no, there's nothing required and the code for hours of operation is.
What about just truck drop off, delivery restriction? Cause I think that's more the bigger concern is you don't want deliveries happening in the middle.
I mean, there is a noise awareness between, I think, 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. But there's noise, noise awareness between 7:00 and 10:00 PM as well. And it gets ignored at that point. It's already 4.3.2 of the legs.
Right. So you don't want, so there's no restrictions on hours of operation? I think we used to do that a long time ago.
I don't know what has been done, President, in the past, but they are requesting that that's not be done because they don't have tenants. Now, uh, the, the process of this to construction is, once this approval is done, they still have to get a zoning compliance certificate from planning and zoning, which they have to meet all the conditions which are set if the board chooses to approve this. They also have to get a building permit as part of the building permit. They get sign off by everybody, planning and zoning, fire marshal, things of that nature. And that's when that portions of the codes get checked. Um, you, we could also at that time, that's when we ask the questions of, well, what are you storing in there? How's that working? Cause it's not like you can't build a building that houses explosives. You just have to build the building to code to house explosives. You know, and that's not what they're building this building for. So there's some things that's gonna be limited to that. As it relates to the hours of operation, I don't know if, like, if you wanna put that on planning and zoning that, you know, when they come to get the zoning certificate, they have to disclose that. And if we feel like it's outside of, you know, what would be reasonable to this commission, that would be something we could revisit.
I know, I'm just worried about chemicals. That's all. Cause there's no way to contain it because there's kind of drains in the building to contain it.
Well, I mean, if they go in and they get used to that, it's to do that. Have to go in and model, you know, approvals to do. It's would be expensive to do that. So I would.
And if they try to put floor drains in, all of that has to be reviewed by health and.
No, I'm just saying, if, if, if there's something like we would have to contain it, it would have to have some kind of containment system.
And I'm sure the, the building and fire code have something to that effect of what that would be.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions? Now we'll go to the public.
Actually, I had, just have a couple of things. That's okay. So all of, um, my and, um, the town engineers' comments have been resolved with the exception of, uh, James had one minor comment about some additional spot grades to be have in the rear, and he did set a bond for this. Um, what was brought up at the last meeting, basically this commission has already gone through a view from the neighbor's point of view, including parking, um, and landscaping, what can and cannot be put in the facility, business hours, the gates, the lights, having the house side shield and the windows in the back. Um, my only comment based on what I've heard is, uh, can we make the fence gray, not white? If you have a, a gray building, I just feel like a white fence is gonna really pop out, uh, which is not what we're trying to do. Um, but a gray will blend in a little bit with the natural wood of vegetation and with the building. Does it?
Now they're gonna remove, uh, one to two parking spaces in the corner.
Yes, and one to two. And we can, if, if we choose to go through the conditions tonight, we can talk about that in detail. Yes.
Public participation. If there's any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Okay. I'm gonna have you come forward, just name, address, microphone, and you.
I'm white and tall.
Yes, and just address the commission, not the applicant.
And I have one request. If we have people actually sign in, uh, just so that we can get, you know, we can address you for our record. To the next one.
I'll speak. Uh, yeah. It makes it bigger.
It is big. It's.
It's fine. Oh, okay. Uh, I'm Derek Kaufman, 22 Hickory Lane, Monroe. Set those to be 22.
Okay.
Thank you. Um.
I'm Lisette Hoffman, L I S E T T E, and I also have 20 Hickory Lane. Um, so we put together this, this first slide, uh, it certainly had from last meeting, I'm not sure we're addressing this meeting. First off, um, no blasting assurance. Um, we're seeking to put from developers for non-blasting back excavation methods and the need for clear potential plans in case, uh, blast发生is avoidable. So if the gray is being lowered, we don't know what's underneath the ground. Is it possible that there will be blasting if that's the plan? Um, noise control measures, usually set operational noise, trucks, forklifts during night hours. Hour of operation is still unknown, not much of a concern for us in the community. Um, there's three days. Are those gonna be forklifts? What are gonna be box truck? Right now, there's two semi is potentially days there that are concerned. Indoor outdoor lighting pollution, um, concerns may have raised about excessive light from the warehouse windows and outdoor fixtures. Um, have the windows north have been removed? That's a sound as it has been. What about those spaces that east towards or other residents have 27th freeway and parking lot lights, floating dock lights? Uh, we do have floors to show you what those light red look like in our, where you like to, to, I mean. Um, I have concerns of those large lights, uh, windows are going to stay, um, in the plans. They are pretty big and they're gonna be above, um, the tree line. They will be shining to our yard, our, 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 our whole, right in the house. Um, kind of transparency raising, um, issues about the lack of tenants and ambiguity around the types of materials that we store. Still, um, I'm not much of a concern. Um, for the security discussions, it's a good area around the, 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 the safety. Um, the swing gate sounds, it's really like a great option, but it's not gonna stop kids from coming through. Um, bring attention to kids coming, starting fires, call the fire department on the lot next door, 207, I think he's next door. Um, and the fire department responded to Hickory Lane instead of Spring Hill. Um, and again, if it's just a swing gate, it's not gonna stop any kids from coming. So I, I do hope that if this goes forward, there'll be some kind of padlock, um, something that'll be easy for, for individuals to get through. Increased natural buffer, community calls for more substantial natural buffer treaties, preserve neighborhood integrity. Um, I think maybe we've seen the street view during the winter months, there's a street view into that lot. Um, natural buffer sounded great, but now there's gonna be some kind of fence there. We're gonna see a regular white fence on the end of our block, which we play in the street with our neighbors and that's not really what we wanna see in a quiet neighborhood. So those are things that we learned from last meeting and I'm not sure we're addressing, we probably have not, which we're worried about.
Um, so this is the view from our, uh, our, uh, sorry, this is the view, there, there's a rock wall that, that's right on the property from.
The north side of the lot.
Where there a lot would be, this would be like right near the building. So as you can see, like you can see our house very visibly. And even to the left there, uh, it's our neighborhood, which people also see. Even right now, as the vegetation is growing in, there's no limbs there. It's, there's no, there's no leaves that are gonna be actually there and still see right into it. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, talk about how actually, but it's mentioning that it's sparse, it's very sparse. It's, it's, it's really easy to see this the entire, not, not just in the winter months, but the whole year round. Um, yeah, we just don't, the, the privacy concerns and the whole idea that this is like a mixed quiet neighborhood. And now we're just gonna have a warehouse here and possibly in the lot next door. We, there's obviously no plans for that right now. What's stopping if we're going there as well? Um, with that comes the home impact value that I've come to, to talk about. I did a lot of research trying to find some like actual numbers based on it. There's, there's really not that much good research. They, they mentioned if it's, you know, Walmart or, or something that's going to, you know, provide jobs or provide something for the community, then it could increase it. But industrial warehouses decrease values in homes. I wish I could give you real numbers for that, but there's a couple of studies that I found um, in Korea and in, um, in Canada that I can. Um, community identity, again, this is just about the characteristic of the neighborhood. We're quite a little neighborhood. This is Monroe and you're kind of bringing the commercial real estate from Trumbull into Monroe, um, where we don't have anything around here. So. Um, just going on, uh, this is the visual impact. So the light pollution that we were talking about. I went out last night and I took, actually, you know, let's see if these work. If not, I have all my, uh, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm actually just gonna go to the ones I have here. So here are. Uh, they just, well, it's loading. These are pictures, uh, from, I think I have one from the daytime from the street. This is the one that you saw on that picture. All right. So this is, uh, the lights that you see back here is actually Trumbull printing. That's not anything that I was doing. This is me walking up that path. I don't know if anybody went over there and saw that there's like a little path that leads down towards this Swiss Army factory, like back area. But I started taking more pictures. So that's from the rock wall. This is, this is, this is a flashlight and this is from the top of our deck. So this is just a flashlight from the rock wall looking at our house right now. Did a couple more. This is from the property line, our, the, the driveway of our house. Uh, that, that one was for Trumbull printing. This is for the Trumbull. This is, again, this is the Trumbull printing right there and that's the light from the outside. Um, that's from, uh, the, the, more like the end of Hickory Lane, right there. And this is from the, uh, that's from the front of our driveway. So I just wanted to show what the light would actually do if it were to be placed there at this, at this time. It's, we'll just. Uh, that's, that's, that's fine. We don't need to show that. You wanna show it?
Yeah. So this picture is of the end of Hickory Lane, looking at that north end of 205 property. Um, it shows the stone wall. It shows the, the marker of the property. There's only about, from here to here, maybe 10 feet or, or, no numbers very well, but, but this distance from the finishing of the curb to that, that marker of the property line. My concern now is what is stopping the creation of some kind of driveway between Hickory Lane and that property that's really small and especially a commercial, if emergency vehicles are already making the wrong and address arrivals, like they're, they're coming the wrong place. Like what's gonna stop them from potentially just breaking through a certain Monroe property and creating some kind of driveway into this facility?
Yeah, this is the.
So like right at the bottom of that screen, you see some stones. That's the end of the curb. That's the stone wall and then off to the left, you can see the marker for the actual property of 205. That's not very large. Is, or can we guarantee that there's not gonna be some kind of driveway placed there in the future, especially if we don't know the tents, we don't really know anything else going on in this property at this point?
Um, we only have this and then the final notes. Um, so yeah, just, uh, concerned about the ease of changing the facility as well. Like this is an open warehouse, right? Is there, if it gets approved, could this change into something else? I don't know. Is it always gonna be a warehouse? Could they just turn it into offices? I'm not saying that they would, but like, if it's approved, what's stopping them from just changing into some other business? I'm, I don't know what that regulation would be. Um, the emergency vehicles we talked about, they already came down our road to address that fire that we were talking about. And then, um, the, the navigation, definitely you want to talk about.
Yeah. So we also back up to the Swiss Army property, which we never hear from them. It's quiet. We don't see lights. It's, I don't have a complaint about them at all. When they used to do their big fire, not their warehouse, big warehouse sales, we used to get a ton of traffic down our road. People thinking that they can get to that property from our street and they just come circle down and we, we get like a ton of traffic during those weekends. And then it'd be gone once the sales over. Who to say that somebody from that may be shipping materials here, that may be a local Monroe, uh, uh, company that's storing, but they're getting contents from another state. They're coming here and they say, oh, there's this street here. It's a right plane. This looks like an easy path. They get just like going through of several printing. Are they gonna come down our street to get views and increase traffic that way? Like, we don't know. Again, we don't know the sentence, so.
And, and just the last thing, but, you know, we obviously don't want the building to be built there, but uh, we just wanna make sure that there's never gonna be an entry from Hickory. No matter what, what's in there. So, um, the last point that we have is just rejection of the application. Respectfully in time, I request the committee reject the application to the business to safeguard Monroe's real estate from approaching into Trumbull's commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have anyone else, uh, tonight that would like to address the commission? Come on up. Uh, just name and address for the record.
All right. This wasn't supposed to sit down. It was just supposed to help our record keeping.
Hi, my name is Chris Andros. I'm at 14 Hickory Lane, actually right next to the house. So that other house that you saw, three woods, that was back to the left, that's my house. And they did a phenomenal job with their presentation. I really don't have too much to add to it, but it seemed like most of the presentation tonight, um, was based from the end of Hickory as well as, no offense to our neighbors, 27 Hickory, but Derek and Lisette's house and my house will be right seeing the whole, the whole length of that, that warehouse. And there is absolutely no cover. So whatever buffer they put in, I would ask that it be increased. Larger trees, more trees, bigger wall, and the lighting too. The hours of operation is very much. Seems like there's no zone restrictions on that, but I ask that it be during, during some business hours and that's the lights inside the building. I, I can see the Trumbull printing press to that building through my kitchen window. So I will see that whole length. Not attractive, big warehouse building. So I respectfully ask that if anything done, that there should be more of a buffer. Actually, ask that it not be built first off, but that it could be some more buffer plantation to block that in. So that's all that happened tonight. Thank you. And thank you for serving.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Um, other people wishing to speak tonight, come right down.
Good evening. My name is Colleen.
Good evening. My name is Colby Lemieux. I live at twenty seven Hickory Lane. This is my husband, Matthew Lemieux.
Matthew Lemieux, twenty seven Hickory Lane.
Thank you for inviting us to speak here tonight. Um, we did have one concern that for the past two public hearings from Wetlands and planning and zoning, we were notified by certified mail that these meetings would occur. And we were invited to attend because at twenty seven Hickory Lane, we are, as they understand, within the seat to be notified. And we were not notified of this meeting. Thankfully, due to our neighbors, the Hoffmanns refreshing the planning and zoning website every day since March thirteenth. We were able to find that this meeting was occurring. We did reach out to the email address listed on the Monroe planning and zoning website as well to inquire when this meeting would be occurring. We did not receive a response. So we are a little bit concerned that shouldn't we be happening in the future? We won't be notified. And the notification process has changed. We certainly respect that. But we request that we be notified if the notification process has indeed changed. Um, as you can tell, this is a very emotional topic for the residents on Hickory Lane. And we do really appreciate the opportunity to be included. Um, and just ask that we are notified so that we can better prepare. We echo the responses and the comments that our neighbors have shared. If you could go this way too. Next one. We have a multitude of concerns and I want to be mindful of everybody's time. But this is really important to us, so we'd like to understand a little bit more about our concerns. The tenants, as we've talked about multiple times tonight, are unknown. This is a proposal with no supported outcomes. We feel, our feelings are that this is a tactic construct of building under the guise of a warehouse that later will just be rented out to unknown vendors, which I think you can plainly imagine is very uncomfortable. We have a concern and lack of confidence in the proposal due to the presented language. We are hearing a lot of, we foresee, we anticipate, we're not sure, that's yet to be determined. These unsupported hypotheses are leaving us with no idea on who's gonna occupy this. This space now or in the future? We're very curious as to where it's the demand. We know from the presentation that there are no tenants. Is there a demand? We have a storage facility already on the corner of Cutler's Drive and Spring Hill Road. There's an office across from Trumbull Printing that says release. If we can't fill the existing spaces, then we're curious as to where the demand is to construct a warehouse of this nature. What we do know is that there are seven families who live on Hickory Lane, who are Monroe taxpaying residents, who chose this community for its aesthetic appeal, for its character and for Monroe's dance floor. We did not anticipate having all of these safety concerns, which we'll get to, which really reside in our primary concern. We've talked about light pollution, the fact that there are no hours of operation when this was discussed at the last meeting continue to be a huge concern for us. The Hoffmanns presented with a family household flashlight, what that would look like with just one flashlight. We're already seeing the lights from Trumbull Printing and that is with the forest full of trees. And I understand from the Wetman's meeting that my husband attended, that the majority of those trees would be cut down. Um, that would be minimizing the natural forest that's already there. Are there rooftop plans? Are there solar plants? What's going on with the light pollution? In addition to our general opinion concerns about light pollution, it is very relevant to bring up actual data and statistics in regards to light pollution, which has caused um, the death of over three billion birds in the United States since nineteen seventy, and that's from the L Daily News. This wasted energy for unnecessary lighting, lighting just shows that the demonstrated lack of awareness between connection, energy, waste, greenhouse gas, emissions, climate change. This is a big topic in our country now. And for light pollution to not be considered as a predictor of climate change is very concerning to us. They know, data has shown that thirty percent of all outdoor lighting is actually wasted on light pollution. There's over twenty one million tons of carbon dioxide per year. In order to offset that, you would need to require to plant eight hundred and seventy five million trees annually. But we have this proposal, which is going to cut down our forest. This is from darksky.org. This is one of the most the, the, the biggest problem that I have, the diesel exhaust and impact to health. Respiratory health is a huge concern and there is a sizable amount of research in medical journals that supports the adverse effects of diesel. Epidemiological studies have demonstrated from an acute and chronic perspective that the effects of diesel exhaust and exposure can lead from anything from irritation in ice, snows, lung function, lung function changes, respiratory changes, headache, fatigue and nausea. Again, these are the acute effects. Chronic exposures, things that happen multiple times, cough, freedom production, lung function decrescs. Profound inflammatory changes in airways to pulmonary function and detrimental health for asthmatics, which I am. I'm not trying to make this about me, but I know that I speak for myself and a resident on Hickory Lane. We have a multitude of residents ranging from children to people who are older than age and LG will see on the particulate matter. Those are the dust particles that emanate from exhaust. Diesel powered vehicles like trucks, delivery trucks account for over sixty percent of all nitrogen oxides and more than seventy percent of all particulate matter. The most susceptible people are children, elderly and individuals with pre-existing respiratory conditions. We certainly don't want our health to be at risk because of trucks driving in. And I'm not interested in hearing, oh, it's going to be just a few trucks occasionally. Again, this is repeated exposure to trucks within a close perimeter to our property. Hazardous materials. We've been carrying this is gonna be a storage facility. We have no idea what's going to be stored. We have no idea who's gonna store it. I, I agree with the concern about the, the drains, the chemicals. What are the future plans? Nobody knows. This is amb- ambiguity at its best. It does feel like a tactic for a basic storage plan to be made just for it to be something bigger in the future. How do we know that this isn't going to turn into something much more aggressive with even more concerns than we're presenting to you tonight? The noise pollution is not just an annoyance factor, but again, connected to research in terms of human health. We would request to see the results of a noise study. I'm not sure that one has even been conducted. We would request that a sound engineer conduct a noise impact study of truck traffic. As you will find on ceds.org, multiple ordinances require that noise not exceed fifty five decibels in residential areas. As you will see on the scale provided in front of you, a truck is carrying eighty decibels, which is loud. This is against the multiple ordinances that exceed fifty five. My husband has a video of a delivery truck at Trumbull Printing from outside our house.
And our big concern about this is about the unknown hours as well. I mean, obviously this is taken at night. This is about nine forty five at night on a Tuesday. Um, I just happened to be taking the trash cans out and I heard screeching of MI's brakes. And I'm like, oh, look at that. I can see Trumbull Printing. Let me make a video. And, you know, this delivery was showing up. And my concern is I don't wanna be sitting there laying down in my bedroom at night, my windows open and having a truck beeping endlessly along with our five-year-old son in his bedroom, waking up and being like, what's that noise like going off? Cause this bedtime is a little bit before mine is nine o'clock.
A little bit of additional research on noise pollution, because this does matter. Noise pollution, noise of about seventy decibels over a period of time can certainly start to cause hearing damage and that is as a result of the CDC. The CDC also recommend, recommends that infants be kept at a safe level of under sixty. This now forces the residents of Hickory Lane to consider outside time with infants. Are we gonna be good to go outside with a baby? Are we going to have to go inside? Are we going to have to close our windows? As you can imagine, as a young family, this is very concerning. This is not something that we thought we would have to be facing when we chose to live in Monroe on this cul-de-sac with our lovely neighbors who also have young children. Privacy and security. I appreciate the recommendation to remove the windows from the backside. But as you see on the map that was provided at the last meeting, our house circled in yellow. The loading docks, the bays, and if you recall from the presentation tonight, above those loading docks and bays is also never lining windows. So now we've got that facing our front door, our windows, our bedrooms, our bathrooms, and trees are being cut down. A six-foot fence isn't going to do anything about the windows on the top half of that building facing our house. There's extreme danger with having these triangular pillars right next to our cul-de-sac.
And in regards to the presentation that was shown earlier, where it showed the site lines and everything. Um, I mean, even on that presentation, uh, I mean, I think it's more guided to the side of the engineering company where it's showing to the, our alleged front door. It's actually the far left, which is where I live here, because our door is on the left side of our house. But, uh, you know, it's actually worse when you go the opposite direction, unlike what was said earlier, because the top of the driveway, you know, is also like a direct line with not even a pine tree in the way. That is our houses from here. You showed that picture last time I was here. Um, and again, that's great coming to our front steps. Our current bigger concern is our bedrooms, our bathrooms are on the second floor. And I actually looked at a topographic map in comparison to where the site was proposed and their elevation. And I think we're about thirty plus feet above, uh, where they are. And that's not counting the height of our house. So the twelve-foot bushes, the six-foot fence is literally negated by an elevation change in the, the, the length. Um, and obviously, that's just for the parking lot concerns. Now we throw a forty-eight foot tall, I believe it's forty-eight foot tall building, which then has, you know, the red, the tenants along with all the windows and everything. So, you know, I think that it might be misguided about what's actually going blocking the long line.
We just touched a bit on this, but if this is going to be a warehouse for storing things, we're very unclear on why items need to see up the windows. Um, removing the windows from the back, yes, but how about the windows they just mentioned facing our house? The loading docks, the bay doors, it, it's very uncomfortable. Are there going to be surveillance or security cameras on the building? If so, then are we just gonna be living under video surveillance now? We're gonna lose the sense of freedom, lose the sense of safety. Who's watching these surveillance videos? Who's watching these, you know, even a room camera, right? And you can see everything. Do I have to worry about my kid being constantly recorded? And then what, what are we doing? This isn't gonna make us feel secure at all. Their security cameras for their security purposes are gonna impede on our sense of freedom. Warehouses have been proven to have an increased risk of theft. They store, they store things of value. We wanna ensure that this does not, that this is not happening. That they understand that if it's empty after hours, if there are no people there, then they could be a target. Again, we're gonna have video surveillance as a remedy to that, or what I just said about us now being under video surveillance as well. These are the pictures of the projected site. The first picture on this side is from our upstairs bathroom. This second picture is from a bedroom. So again, there is a direct, there is a direct eyesight. Those windows are gonna be facing that. We are elevated on the hill as we discussed. There's nothing. There's no white fence. There's no trees that are going to stop anyone from looking directly into our homes. And I guess we're just gonna have to get changed at all times with the blinds drawn, with the windows closed and not feeling like anyone's ever clearing into our house. This is a very uncomfortable situation to be in.
This is, this is the view I would pick currently in regards to actually moving to the, to the left of our house and being able to actually see more um, than the proposed line, which was shown in the presentation earlier, that went to the opposite corner of our house. So from literally our driveway to the other end of our house, I mean, we pretty much have a clear insight of what's going on, who's there. Now, except for that annoying pine tree that we have in here on the half of the same ground now, but that's.
We appreciate your time. Those were the references and the resources leading to the data presented. Like our neighbors at fourteen Hickory Lane and twenty-two Hickory Lane, we respectfully and kindly ask that this application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you for your information. We have anyone else here tonight that would like to speak concerning this application? We have anybody online that would like to speak concerning this application? Yeah, it's the, uh, Nikita Borisov?
Yes, hi, uh. My name is Nikita Borisov. I'm owner of twenty one Hickory Lane. Uh, I wasn't aware about it before I found out about this meeting last evening. And I completely support, uh, our neighbors, cause our house next to twenty seven Hickory Lane and right across from twenty, twenty-two, twenty, I don't remember what's your address. But we on the hill and we're gonna have the same problems. We're gonna see everything from both bedrooms and from living room. And it's gonna affect, affect us a lot. Cause when we bought house three years ago, it's when our daughter was born. And the reason why we bought this exact house is because of that end with the forest around. And, uh, right now, uh, we're planning to destroy it and it's a disaster for us. And again, I completely agree with everything that was, were told by our neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else? No. All right. Do we have anyone else online that would like to speak regarding this application? Seeing none, then we'll go back to the applicant.
Um, I actually do have a couple code, uh, there's a commission if it would be in assistance of them. Um, first off, in the industrial, um, portion of the code, it does talk about performance standards. The applicants did create a narrative to that, but to refresh what the code is. Obviously, this is zoned in industrial zone, therefore will have industrial uses. However, there are items in the code that talks about when that borders up against a residential district. One of those items, um, is the noise code. So it does have, you know, during operation hours at no point on a zone boundary between a residential district and any industrial district. So the radiating sound levered, levels measured in decibels from any operation exceed those listed in a column. There's a column that's here and the highest decibel level is seventy-four out of everything, you know, located in that column. Um, so that is there. They will have to comply with that standard now as the commission, you know, knows. It's really hard in the moment to have somebody go out and measure it in decibels with a sound machine and things of that nature. The way this is normally done is mostly for like the actual operations of the industrial facility where you can do tests and things of that nature to make sure equipment, um, and things that will be happening on a regular basis is in there. And so I bring that up just to state that as part of the special exception permit approval process, which is what we were in, it does have a condition in section eight, one, five E. Due to the variety and, uh, um, of each special exception permit use, the commission may impose conditions and restrictions to any such use which in its judgment are required to protect adjacent uses and the neighborhood in general, including a limitation of hours of operation. The commission may stipulate such modifications and or conditions as are reasonable and necessary to protect or promote public health. to protect or promote public health, safety or welfare, property value, the environment, sound planning and zoning principles, improved land use, site planning and land development, or to achieve a better overall neighborhood compatibility. And that's within the realm of the commission. And just one clarification on noticing of meetings, which I know this commission is aware of, is public hearings get noticed at the beginning of the public hearing. They don't get, they don't get noticed at each meeting. So this is a continuation of the original public hearing. So it's the same thing as wetlands. The idea is because you know there is a public hearing currently in front of the commission, you track it as you feel necessary, especially if you're attending the meetings. We talk about when it will be continued to the next meeting. It was asked to be tabled. It was part of public record that that had happened. I do apologize if you reached out to planning and zoning and you did not get a response related to that. However, this is the state statutes for notification and the commission and staff did comply with that. That's it?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, just, just again, for record, so many here. I think Kathleen will back me up on this as well. I think just a jot of a few things that I can respond to. In terms of regards to change of views, I know someone mentioned you at the top, it's building, it's manufacturing. We would have to come back in front of the commission or anything that's not approved as a warehouse use. If, like I said, if stuff's stored in the building, it requires containment or requires some type of floor drains and additional septic tank to come in. Or that quarterly, in the move by, it's going to help go fire department. So there are some protections here for the public in that regard. If it was to change, we'd have to come back for that change of use. We will see the process there as soon as we can. There was a concern about potential installation of the driveway to Hickory Lane. We're about an eight-to-nine foot grade change at the lowest point from our parking lot off to Hickory Lane. That would result, and I did quick calculations, about a 16% to 18% grade, which is pretty steep. So it's kind of included for us to be able to take that, any type of driveway connection with it. It's not envisioned, it's not practical from a delivery standpoint, I understand trucks can add mix on the wrong way occasionally, but we would not want that as a truck move through a neighborhood, you know, and creating kind of a heavy staff from Panhandle or so. In my mind, there's some assurances there in regards to no vehicular access to residential in the back. We are set at the back of the property line. I know some of those pictures with the flashlight we're taking right there at the property line. With that fence there, you know, and then our parking lot being another about five to six feet lower, it can fall the height of, you know, the headlights, like two, three feet of upgrade. You know, that fence, that fence is still provide a good 10 to 15 feet above any direct layer from headlights. I don't foresee that being an issue. We did talk about something the commission wants to potentially remove those windows from the back of the building. Obviously, we prefer to have them, but that would be up to your discretion. But I think if those were to be removed, we're taking most of that light pollution concern, I think, away as much as we possibly can. Kathleen did mention it is owned industrial, right? While I do appreciate the concerns, the developer does have a right, you know, obviously to develop their property, which we're trying to do, you know, what we can in the form of fence and additional buffer plantings to try and screen this as best as we possibly can. I can appreciate that that lot, that is only public space by the town and the road, might be a little bare. If we don't control that lot, there's nothing we can do to increase any vegetation on that property. It's simply not part of our property in terms of, I believe it's 22 Hickory Lane. What we can do is try to be, start with our property line, come back to the building. Can't fill it all in because there's some drainage and stuff that needs to be done there, but we're going to try to do the fence and vegetation back a good 20 feet. So half of the buffer between, you know, the property line itself and the building level will be screened with every green screen. It's the best extent that we can, that we can. And as Kathleen mentioned, you know, in regards to the light pollution and diesel exhaust, there are those special permit criteria that they're going to be held accountable for in terms of decibels, you know, what could, dust, what can kind of escape over the property line for various items that can be measured. And I have the discretion of the town for things that are kind of up to interpretation. We did specifically cite the building so that the loading docks were as far from the residential uses as we possibly could. So not only are they further distance away, but you also have lots of building itself screening some of that noise from getting to those residential properties on the north side. So that was the goal of our site, and so I had to try to make it as least intrusive as we possibly could, you know, for money's worth. And if there's any other questions or comments or concerns?
Thank you very much. I'm going to just ask the commissioners if they have any last questions before we close the hearing.
Just wondering, would it make sense to put the fence on the opposite side of the tree so it's not so visible to the neighborhood? That makes sense at all?
It would just be lower on the slope. I don't have a preference either way. I don't know if Kathleen has a preference or you guys have a preference either way. We would just be putting it lower on the slope as you get pulled. So that view would be less.
I guess I'd be interested in what the neighbors thought of that. They'd rather see just trees or the fence and trees.
Can I speak?
Sure.
You have the microphone, I'm so sorry.
Since one of the commissioners asked a question, you could respond to his question if you would, yes.
Okay, yeah, so in relation.
I'm so sorry, are you speaking to the microphone?
Derek, 22 Hickory Lane. We'd say probably the trees, then the fence, noting also that, pretty sure there's no fence from the, I forget which side it is. The fence is only towards the, so that would just be vegetation. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That's all I have.
Have you projected the construction time?
We're told that they want to start construction in summer. Yeah, we're getting through, our plans were kind of set, but they still have to get through a full set of building design packages. It's pretty straightforward inside, but they're already soliciting bits for site work, so probably summer, probably to next spring. And then when they get tenants, they have to do a tenant check out.
Do you know any subsurface condition right now? Any?
Yeah, they, we've, the material is going to need to be, probably needs instructor fill. The material on the site is not great, so it's probably going to need some work for the building itself. And there's some, there's some title on our table as well, but they're, we're in the process of getting through that for the foundations.
Thank you.
So is there going to be any blasting?
No.
All right, so Kathleen, we could, we could, this is near a residential neighborhood, we need to roll the hours of operation there?
As part of a special exception permit, it seems that you can evoke hours of operation.
Oh. We need to come up with some kind of plan here because you're in a residential neighborhood here, and I don't think we want a 24-hour facility there.
So I can speak on behalf of the seller for that request.
I understand what his request is, but this commission has to worry about the residents too.
Why don't we do standard business hours then?
They don't have one because they don't have.
Oh, no, it means no.
It wouldn't be possible, the main concern is noise from trucks and backup alarms from forklifts and stuff like that. I would just truck operations because if it's some type of warehouse in use, they may need to be able to move stuff around at night in the warehouse.
Delivery is what we're concerned with.
Yeah.
Delivery reason, we're also concerned with, you know, we have people coming and going, lights coming and going, things coming and going. We've done this before. This commission have done this plenty of times, but we set hours of operation, and you don't have anything from, because you don't even have who you're going to go there. This is just, you're going to put a building in and you're going to try to put tenants in.
Correct. It limits their ability to market.
I'm wary of leaving it wide open. I don't know about the rest of his commission, but I'm wary of leaving it wide open. I don't want to give you an approval on something unless I know the hours of operation.
As your recreational, I don't, I'm not quite sure whether we would. Like I said, I would prefer if it was left to just, you know, no truck delivery, it sounds like that.
Well, we can discuss that in deliberations if you don't have any suggestions.
It's kind of where it's at, yeah. You can propose something or we can just decide.
We'll actually, we'll open and come up with something, but.
Our request would obviously be for 24-hour operations, but if it doesn't appease the commission, then no, nothing, nothing too restrictive. Maybe six to 10 or something like that.
We'll take a look at it in deliberation then.
All right. Thanks for your questions.
And just to clarify, you would rather have the commission close the public hearing tonight and start deliberations as compared to extend the public hearing and talk to the owner applicant?
If we can leave it open, can we leave it open to that one specific item and not go back and address everything all over again?
Well.
We're not going to do that.
One person at a time.
Go ahead, explain.
If you keep the public hearing open, yes, the public has the opportunity to come and speak to, you know, whatever they'd like to speak to at the public hearing. Also, I will state that we end our 35 days, April 25th, so you would also have to grant us an extension for the public hearing to remain open.
So I think we would, we prefer to close it tonight, obviously with, with our, you know, recommendation that we limit the no-hours operation of the building just to deliveries itself, but if we have to put something on there, if we can, you know, like a six, six in order to 10 at night for operating hours, something to that effect, it sounds like I might be able to talk everybody out of that. So I think that's where I can come to agree.
Any other questions on the side?
I just want to add on to the noise and the time of use. So not just truck noise, but the forklift noise is a concern for me because you may have deliveries, and I think 10 o'clock at night is way too late to be getting things delivered. Growing up near a lumberyard, I heard all, I heard all of it. But if the bays are open and they're moving things at night, I don't want to hear forklifts backing up and going in and out all night. So I'm not deliberating on this tonight, but I want forklifts addressed, trucks addressed, and I will be the one to say, I, I agree with, hold on. Colby? I don't understand, I did a little research on commercial warehouses, why we need to have all those windows? I don't see any other commercial warehouse that looks this, I don't want it, pretty for just storing stuff. I mean, I see her concern because it's literally facing their front yard. Why do we need to have so many windows on that side of the building?
I think the request was made to remove the ones from north facade.
Right, but now looking at the pictures in their presentation tonight, their windows on the whatever side it used to fall, why do we need them?
Well, it was, it was, one of those hazards that was staring throughout the building.
Okay.
I don't think the intent was to join it before and base it towards.
Not at all, but now that we see that perspective, it's going to be intrusive, there's going to be light pollution. Why, maybe for the owner, why do we need that many windows on a warehouse?
I mean, I think we're just getting natural light, you know, that's, I think was, and trying to pretty out the facade, if you will, instead of just a straight great panel. But if it's, if it's causing an issue with everyone and the commission, we're just requesting some of those windows on that east facade, we can do some of that as well.
It's an issue for me, I don't know about anybody else, but those are my, those are my comments. Thank you.
We can come to a agreement on that. Half of the building, eastern half of the building, that would, the nearest building back to like almost 500 feet away, I think, three to four, maybe three to 400 feet away.
This is an open building, right? It's not a two-story building.
Well, just.
What's to prevent that from happening?
Say again?
What's to prevent that from happening?
What do you need to?
Two stories, I mean, that may be why you put all the windows in there.
That's, that's, the intent is just open, open rattle storage for.
No, I have that, I understand that, but it doesn't work out. You have the windows in there and you create it into a two-story building.
Wouldn't they be underparked then?
We're parked exactly where we could be.
What if it was two stories?
We'd have, we'd be double, yeah, per square inch. So we're basically maxed out for you.
Would they get in for passing? One?
Yeah.
And they would still have to go through zoning, they would have to go through building.
I just can't understand, like, all those windows in there, I mean, if, if it was going to be a warehouse, why wouldn't you put them in the roof?
If the commission wants to remove them, we'll remove the windows from the north side.
Okay.
All right, any other commissioner questions? Go ahead, John.
Not only the deliveries that I'm concerned with, in commercial buildings, sometimes they have refuse collection early morning, like four o'clock. Can we limit, there's a?
I mean, I think it's going to be for the right, I, I think the issue we're going to have is the tenants and the landlord aren't going to be able to control when the garbage company comes to pick up. But, you know, that's going to be, you know, what we're doing with garbage pickup. But again, it's going to have to be in accordance with noise regulations.
No, but it's happened before where there's some area where they pick up real early. So what I'm concerned here, not knowing who the tenant is, maybe we could, the owner could make some recommendation as to limit after at least six o'clock.
For refuse pickup?
Yes.
I mean, it's.
They're very noisy.
No, I understand, I just, if you can appreciate, I don't think we're going to be able to have control over when a third party's picking up the refuse. And that would be the same with any other use of town. I mean, ideally, you're right, they shouldn't be coming before six o'clock in the morning. I just don't know how we can enforce someone else even with the refuse, because tenant and the landlord themselves are going to keep that service. You know what I mean? That, that's, that's my own concern.
Yeah, but it's a different company coming in again.
But isn't this gated? Is this closed?
There, there is, there is gate proposed.
There is a gate proposed, so that gave, we give you hours of operation, that gate's not going to open until that.
If, if there was restriction.
Same, so that's going to eliminate the garbage drive from showing up because the gate's going to be closed. Okay.
More question? Sorry, it's the large coffee. Can we, can we speak, sir, can we speak to Colby's concern? I know you too, Derek, I keep leaving out you. Wait, who's Mary, what, Matt and Colby? Can we speak to their question about security? What, do we know what kind of video security is going to be on the building?
We don't know, and that's probably the tenant case as well. I would assume they're going to have to do something over the front doors of the facility. I don't know, I don't know what the plans are for, you know, for the whole building itself. Someone needs to, to get into like the whole rooms. If there's requests, then we offer lower on the building so as to obstruct view, I think that's something we would be willing to do. I mean, obviously, everyone can appreciate safety is, you know, a priority, but understood we probably don't, we get knocked in maybe 20 to 30 feet up on the back, so we can use block if we want to fast. I'm experienced in that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? You'd like to close the hearing? Yes. Okay, so we'll, hearing is hereby closed, and we're moving along to our second public hearing for tonight. Second public hearing is SCP 2023-11, file 1659A, 139141, and 201 Turkey Rusor, and 30 Pablo's Hill Court. This is a hearing that's continued from 4/9/24. Do we have any new?
We do.
Exhibits?
Since our last meeting, we received the extension letter from the project attorney, Chris Russo, dated April 9th, 2024, to extend us to this meeting. We received additional information related to the Connecticut DOT information that was requested by the traffic engineer. We received that April 12th, 2024. A regulation letter from the project attorney, Chris Russo, dated April 15th, 2024. Realty Concept Inc. letter titled, "Revised Proposed Residential Condominium Development", which was the updated fiscal impact response to the changes to the bedrooms, dated April 14th, 2024. Realty Concept Inc. letter titled, uh Revised Proposed Residential Condominium Development, uh which was the uh the updated uh fiscal impact response to the changes to the bedrooms dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Town Engineer Comment Memo dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Response Letter to the Trout Unlimited Letter, um also responding to the concerns about the Copper Mill Brook uh that was raised by a resident, that was received April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, Unit Information Exhibit that was received uh tonight, and the RKG Associates Technical Memorandum dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. That is it.
Thank you. Um, for the applicant.
I'm sorry.
Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Russo, Russo, who is the LLC offices uh at Ten Southville Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicants. Um, I am going to turn it over to Jason, who's going to go through uh some of his submissions. Um, and then uh I was going to touch on the, the uh fiscal analysis uh that was submitted. And then, you know, we're obviously here to answer your, your, your questions and comments and anything from the public, um but then we would be prepared tonight to go for our closing remarks if they, so. Um, so with that, I will transfer over to Jason to discuss what he said.
Good evening, for the record, Jason, as we've been associates, uh engineer surveyors, two-twenty-seven Stephanie Rowan Easton, um I don't have a lot tonight, so um. This is uh the exhibit I submitted this morning. Uh, there was a little unclear based on the plans we submitted exactly where the duplex units were, and um. There was some questions on the square footage of the buildings uh from last hearing that we wanted to clarify, um so I just. I just uh call out where those, where those complexes are, uh so they're, they're spread out in three different locations here. Units twenty, thirty-three, and ninety-one, that are in the plan set, they're designated as a line down the middle, and it's called as twenty A, twenty B, thirty-three A, et cetera. Um, and then the uh, the floor areas, we, we did supply the uh floor plans at elevation views, that were in the plan set. I could pull them up if anyone wants to look them over. They were in the last plan set as well. Um, but the, the square footage of the units, we had duplexes, the thousand square feet, uh the three bedroom meters, twenty-seven hundred, and the four bedrooms, three thousand plus or minus square feet. Um, the only other thing that I think I submitted, this was actually from back when we first started this in January, yes, and so. But uh we had received, the commission had received a, a letter from Travel, and it was concerned about Copper Mill Brook, and we had addressed that at that time, um so. Uh, this just goes through, um. What we think the potential impacts are, which we don't think there is any, um but we also included what we've done to mitigate any, any environmental impact. This is all what we've done as part of the wetlands approval, um and then I, I just gave a, just a diagram here of where. Uh, our property is, um so all of our stormwater comes down, discharges into a series of three or four detention basins. And then gets into the, the stream to pond network, goes into this large swamp, and then Copper Mill Brook flows out of this swamp. Um, so there's a long way for the water to go before it gets anywhere at Copper Mill Brook. Um, and actually, Travel Unlimited, they're concerned with about the halfway river, not Copper Mill Brook, but um, but it travels almost a mile before it gets to the halfway river. So uh we don't feel there's any, any uh anticipated impacts to uh, to any of the, the offsite wetlands or onsite wetlands. Um, and I think that was all that I had at once, so I turned it back over to Chris. And any questions on any of that that anybody wants to add now?
Did you address the conservation commission's uh request for no invasive plant?
Um, I didn't actually see that letter, but we certainly can, uh if they would like to study that.
Yeah, it's not we in wetlands application.
Yeah, we have gotten something that's applicable to it.
Yeah, no, no issue with that. Sorry, Jerry, actually, I hadn't seen the technical memorandum from RKG, so I'm just mentioning our comments. Um, so in, in addition, uh we submitted a uh, an updated fiscal analysis. The commission had requested that based on the reduction in the number of bedrooms. And uh version to duplexes created six to one bedroom. Um, dwelling units, uh Stan uh Nizdowski submitted uh an amended letter. Um, where a lot of things, you know, because it doesn't affect um. You know, regarding town services, things like police fire, EMS, work, uh fire, uh fire marshal. Um, and he had contacted them to make sure that there was no, there was no uh revised inspection that I, it really um centers around the uh school children, what effect it has. Uh, on fiscal analysis, um and with this, you might remember from the last year, last hearing, um. There was multipliers that were used for four bedroom, because it's all, maybe it's now, but dispersal between, you know, we have the six one bedrooms, we have the three bedrooms, four bedrooms. More reflects the units that you find um in Monroe, and so that adjusted what the, the, the ratio for household is. Um, and the result was the reduction in four uh school age children, uh which is, you know, I, I took Stan, so it's pretty conservative for to. You know, and, and that's what we're trying to do is being conservative in our analysis, but removing any one bedrooms, you know, will result in, in, in the reduction of four. Again, we're trying to be uh conservative. He's also not including in that kids that would go to private school. There's certainly a portion of children who would be in this development who would uh go to private school. But again, to be conservative, uh he did not um, uh not include, uh not include that. Um, the other uh, and the other impact uh that he factored in was that, uh, you know, we'd said the, the units would be selling for eight hundred thousand. We, we took in a slight reduction there um to, to make it seven hundred fifteen thousand based on the loss. Though honestly, um, I worked with the Realtor, uh, or I've spoken with a Realtor who has worked in Monroe for decades. Um, and will tell you that these, that the, the three bedrooms units will sell uh very well. Um, and they'll be hard, heavily targeted um by families with, with no schooling. Uh, and he's certainly seen it in other similar types of developments, um and those, those particular families, uh the ones with no school age children are, are much better positioned. In an open market uh to be able to acquire these units than families with children, and I, I can appreciate that. I have three kids, I have paper, piano lessons, tutors. Uh, you know, all that stuff. I am not in the, I'm not able to compete with, with some of those individuals who um, who uh don't have school age children. Um, so I think, you know, the Stan took a very conservative approach in his, in his analysis, but uh the truth may bear out that, that this will really um be uh. With this now increased number of three bedroom units, um that there'll be a lot of families with no school age children uh who will seek those, those units. The impact, the overall impact uh is a reduction in the net fiscal impact uh to five hundred sixty-seven thousand positive, so it will bring uh as total. Looking at town services and everything, uh the uh, it will bring revenue to the town in the amount of five hundred, five hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. I did just quickly receive and look at the RKG memorandum, uh which looked at uh, uh Mr. Nizdowski's updated report. And I'm just reading through the. The bold sections, the responses, it says RKG takes no issue with the estimated valuation to the four fourteen update, or with the estimated gross property tax receipts of one million nine hundred four thousand three hundred forty dollars. Then it says RKG also takes no issue with the vehicular uh estimates in the fourth, fifth, four fourteen update, or with the estimated tax receipts totaling three thousand four hundred forty dollars. Our RKG takes no issue with the estimated cost for town services. Um, there, uh because we did have different um estimates, and you know, overall of what the fiscal impacts were. Uh, they noted our revised one. Theirs actually came up, uh I think it was a hundred fifteen thousand net positive. They also thought it would be a net positive to the town. Um, with this revision and the reduction of bedrooms, they actually raised it um to a hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred fifteen dollars, so it came up. Uh, you know, came up slightly there, um and they state in summary, the estimated net fiscal impact for revised development renders a net positive fiscal benefit to the town of Monroe. Uh, this holds true for the applicant, um four fourteen update, as well as uh for the RKG alternative, um with a greater. So um, so. That's regarding the fiscal analysis. I'm happy to answer any questions with regards to that, um otherwise, uh happy, you know, happy to, to get into our.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go with the um commissioners. Do you have any questions for closing the hearing?
Yeah, the three bedrooms, you were projecting to sell at three, uh seven fifty?
Seven fifty, but, and I, I mean, again, we, we talked to a Realtor who's worked here for decades in Monroe, thinks it could definitely be, and you see that in Stan's report, actually. Um, he notes that. Uh, market research has indicated the subject development was in place today, market value may be higher than projected within the report. The market value may be approaching about nine hundred thousand. But for the purposes of this analysis, an estimated of market value of eight hundred thousand, utilized.
The three bedroom?
For the, for the four bedroom.
Four bedroom, so eight hundred for the four bedroom, seven fifty. What about the one bedroom?
The one bedroom is because those are restricted as affordable, so those, those are set, um, you know, uh, you, you, they can't go up, they can't go down. That is set at two hundred thousand dollars. It's the, the, the affordable restriction formula. But those units, there's anticipated to be no school age children.
Go ahead, Verna.
I just have one question. The revision is uh with the number of kids introduced to the school system. What, what is that number now?
So they are projecting, you mean the total number is sixty-six, is the amount of school children that are projected. Uh, I think uh, did RKG put what their provision, I don't know.
Um, RKG is uh here tonight to speak if you have any questions directly to them.
I can, they, I can estimate it eighty-six.
I, yeah, I believe their number was higher. Would you like RKG to speak to that at this time?
I just want to know if it's eighty-six, and that's over a span of how many years?
Uh, of the buildout, I think five, six years or so. And, and again, they still say, even at the eighty-six students, it's a, it's a net fiscal uh benefit, um and it's actually more than the previous.
You guys went in and ended the sidewalks all the way around, on the side of the street, around the.
Yeah, so it's all within, it's in front of all the buildings, and it connects to the, the clubhouse and into the parking area, I guess, as required.
Thank you.
And school buses are going to go into the.
Correct. Talk to the superintendent. There's a letter from the superintendent. They read on every level. So elementary, middle, high school, every level.
They extend all the way up to the street?
No, no, it doesn't seem to extend to Turkey Rusor. The regs don't require that either, but uh, um, it keeps it all contained. It's nice, it keeps it all contained within, you know, the interior development, which is set back significantly.
You mean the regs don't require?
The regs require that you have sidewalks that connect to, in front of the houses, like we were talking about last time, in front of the houses, and then to the parking areas, which is the um. There, there's one parking area that, that's in the middle of the development, next to the clubhouse, which you're also required to connect to. Read that right, actually, I have.
Any other questions?
No, I guess.
Want to see the picture?
I have one question about the sidewalks. They're going to be on a curbed street? So the sidewalks are going to sit six inches above, there's going to be six inch reveal curve?
Yes.
So.
Set from the curb, I believe.
So they're gonna basically have to come down and up and down and up?
Now, the sidewalks are giving ramp up and match the curve.
Okay, beautiful.
Thought about that.
Okay.
So, so just so I can read, I, I can read that uh regulation when I split that up. Sidewalk shall be provided as required by the commission to assure safe pedestrian travel between buildings. And for buildings to off-street visitor parking, recreational or community facilities, mail delivery pickup facilities, which were said to be uh in the clubhouse, and to bus stops, to school stop. So, and we'll, we'll connect all sidewalks. The bias would be.
Absolutely. No questions?
No questions, but just. I mean, I find that, I know we can't do anything based on financial impact, but the, the market value, what you're saying, just doesn't make sense, and. Based on comparisons in other towns of the same size condo, the same size square footage, there's no way. They're, they're going for maybe five ninety, may, maybe seven if you're on a river, so it's just, just going to put that out there, but that's all.
Just so you know, we, we, we checked, and we, we checked multiple stories. There's actually Realtors here now that we checked with, and, and other, and other uh resources to try to verify that that number is accurate. I mean, you want to know until, you know, of course, until you, you, uh, you know, until they actually sell.
That's all.
Good, um, Stephanie?
Uh, just to review, most of this has been addressed of, of what was requested and asked at the last meeting. It was the updated financial impact, which was here. Um, how the bedroom count changed the analysis, which they addressed in, in the comment letter. Um, about the redesign of the intersection at Turkey Rus, the town engineer has no more further comments, except just to point out that highway work permits are going to need to be um pulled for, for the work within the right of way. Um, there was a request about the duplexes were going to look like. They did add a sheet into their drawing sheet that shows an elevation in the floor plan, so that is included in it as part of the record. Um, and then obviously, they addressed uh Copper Brook as well, and, and the sidewalks along the property, and like we said, it loops around, and then it goes basically down to the, the treatment plant. And then that's where the crosswalk is and loops back up, so as you think about people in the community wanting to uh circulate through, they would have a circular walking path that would be uninterrupted. And then my, uh, my question to Mr. Edwards had to do with the fact that, because this is in a traditional neighborhood where you would have driveways that are a hundred and twenty feet away from each other. These are literally right next to each other. I just wanted to make sure the intent wasn't that it was a six inch reveal, come down, come up for a couple of feet and come back down. Um, and they said they do address that as part of the grading, where they bring the driveway up in order to make sure it's a nice, smooth circulation for anybody that wants to use it as a walking path.
Okay, thank you very much. Any last minute questions from the commissioners? Yeah, where's your bus stop?
Clubhouse. It would be right up the circle, so the bus would be certain. Uh, the bu, the bus will come through here, search through, and then probably stop right from outside, but there's an area here for parents to drop, or wait for the bus, or drop their kids if they want to. Um, and then the bus can continue out. Now, in honestly, the bus has also has the ability to make a full loop, if that's what the bus company decides to. We, based on the conversation we've had, I think we go to the clubhouse and come back out.
You gotta, you gotta go to the clubhouse and turn around there?
They can make it around the circle right here, yeah, come back out. We have a.
You have enough turning radius here?
We have a plan that we included in the last submission that showed.
And that has been reviewed by both myself and the town engineer.
Are you ready to close the hearing?
Well, I got a, I got a whole review of the standards, but if, if everyone's done their questions, I'll, I'll go in.
Sorry, are you ready for your closing argument?
Right, yes.
And, and the public stuff.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the public, yeah.
So do, yeah, so would you like the public to go first? Okay.
All right. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak um to a commission about this application? Please raise your hands. Uh, seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to, uh, Victoria Ramos? Please uh.
Hello.
Your name and address, please.
Victoria Ramos, thirty-eight Web Circle in Monroe. Um, I heard that they are saying that a portion of children should go to a private school, but why would anybody choose to do that in Monroe? Where the schools are one of the main reasons why people come to this town. Um, also, in the last meeting, it was said that eight hundred K is a starter home, so a lot of families would be moving on from these homes, and. In this day and age, eight hundred K is not a starter home, and not for a lot of people, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Do we have anyone else online that would like to address the commission on this application? Anyone else online or in person that would like to address the commission? Anyone else online or in person that would like to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, then we're going back to the application.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Commissioners, uh, regarding all that's coming, I mean, I I almost meant what I was trying to say, which is that the 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 families that don't have school age children, it's not their starter home, be better positioned for this. Um, so I think I appreciate Stan being conservative for sure, and I I think that's gonna play out less um uh even less wage change than than these things. Uh, and I did just regarding the market rate and what's going on right now in Monroe, so the ridge at Monroe, twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike. Houses that have two bedrooms, two baths, that are twenty four hundred to twenty uh two thousand seven hundred forty square feet are positive, which means uh for for a purchase price of seven twenty to seven seventy thousand. And and we obviously more veterans and more exercise than that. Uh, so we think we are in line with with what the uh what the market rate is current. Uh, so concluding remarks. Uh, first, uh, I want to thank the commission, town staff, um, the consultants and the public uh for their time uh during this public hearing, special meetings. I know everyone has given a lot of time to this and it's it's very much appreciated. Uh, there have been many comments provided that we have responded to, and I think uh it's made this a better project. So really appreciate it. Uh, and you know, it it has to be, you know, just the sidewalks alone, for example, I think it's made it a a better project. My client, his wife Kim, moved to Monroe in nineteen eighty five. Uh, they raised a son and daughter in this community. Uh, they loved and called home for thirty years. Uh, in two thousand three, he purchased two oh one Turkey Roost Road and thirty Cotler Silk Court uh from a prior owner for two point two. And uh prior to my client's purchase, uh an illegal quarry was operated on the two oh one Turkey Roost portion of the land uh in violation of the regulations, which was a tremendous nuisance, uh blasting, uh trucks going in and out of the site, down Turkey Roost. It was a nuisance to the town uh and neighbors and subject to repeated litigation. Um, and he purchased that and 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 put an end to it. Uh, in two thousand six, he purchased one forty one Turkey Roost Road from a Gory family for seven hundred thousand dollars. And he spent years restoring the former quarry, uh, not restoring the use, but restoring the property uh so that it could be developed for housing in compliance with the existing zoning regulations that had been designated on site. Fortunately, when he first attempted to develop the property, uh the housing market crashed in two thousand eight and development was not economically viable at the time. During the twenty plus years my client has owned the site, uh he's paid millions in property taxes uh to the Town of Monroe. And uh during that time period, uh the commission and its, you know, iteration back then, uh at the time, they changed regulations, zoning map in two thousand thirteen, stood by its designation of the site for multi-family residential development, when it located it in the newly created MFR district, um which I know we've discussed how it mirrors the DR regulations. Um, so originally, the site was in the DR, uh was known as the DR, um which had regulations that mirror what is the term, the current uh MFR regulations. I submitted that analysis about how closely they they those regulations mirrored and mirrored each other. It was really just a a change in names and uh of the district and uh in updating to kind of modern times, but other other than that, they they uh they were essentially the same regulations. My client studied the regulations prior to purchasing the property to understand what the town planners have outlined as both desirable by the town and acceptable under the regulations. Considering what he has done from the beginning with this property, uh he has worked towards its restoration and development in line with the town's standards and regulations. I want this commission to know we were confident in our submissions because we had reviewed uh our own reports. Uh, we we double checked. Uh, for wetlands, we retained the services of two separate experts to review our plans. Uh, we had a traffic report reviewed. I reviewed uh uh this application for compliance with two other zoning attorneys, so we really checked to make sure that what we're proposing um and and what understand what our impacts were and and uh make sure we're comfortable with the application before uh before we came in with it. So we were confident when we submitted that we had an application which is fully compliant with the existing regulations. Uh, during the public hearings on this application, we have heard comments from the commissioners and the public about the economic impact on schools, the safety of Turkey Roost Road, and the need for more affordable housing in the Town of Monroe. Um, both towns consultants and our own consultants did their due diligence, spoke with multiple departments about Turkey Roost Road. Uh, we spoke with superintendent schools about the impact on the school system. The advocates' consultants and the towns' consultants came to the same conclusions, namely that Turkey Roost Road can handle the traffic from the new development uh safely and there will be a net positive income economic impact uh to the Town of Monroe. This development will be a great addition to the town. Um, there are so many benefits derived uh beyond uh just the development. There's eighty one acres of land uh to be preserved as open space in perpetuity. Uh, this is developable land. It's private land with the right to be developed, uh just as the homes we all live in were developed. But open spaces are a part of the character of this town, and this development development poses well beyond uh what is required. The MFR district uh open space requirement blows the doors off the requirements of other zones at fifty percent required open space. Other zones are nowhere near that. Um, we complied with that fifty percent, uh but my client went even beyond with an additional thirty one acres of open space. Uh, this is land that will be preserved for generations of Monroe residents to come. In addition, we are actually restoring the area uh where the development is proposed. Uh, this has to be one of the most unique applications I will ever have, uh where the area for development was a literal moonscape. Uh, and with the development, we are ha- adding hundreds upon hundreds of trees uh to what's existing. We are proposing to install a water line at the advocates' cost, um which the Monroe residents who live along it will have to pay zero dollars for its installation along the road. They only need to pay to connect from their house line out on the road. Um, we spoke earlier in earlier uh hearing about a benefit that has to the property values, but also how the installation of hydrants will not be possible, uh that will reduce their homeowners' pre uh premiums, but more importantly, increase their safety. Um, in our economic analysis, we included the cost to cover an entire police officer, which is well beyond requirements for just this development, you know, in terms of an officer. Um, the development will generate income for this town that will fund uh these resources and benefits throughout the town. Um, even though we are compliant with the regulations and my client came in under the less dense option of the regulations, and the significant improvements that went beyond what is required by the regulations, we listened to current concerns of the commission and the public, took it to heart. And my client voluntarily decided to reduce the perceived impact on Monroe Public Schools and Turkey Roost Road while addressing the need for more affordable homes um by changing his application from ninety nine four bedroom homes uh to thirty four bedroom homes, sixty three uh three bedroom homes and six one bedroom homes, uh the latter of which will be uh designated as affordable. Uh, and you know, actually, Commissioner Westland, I forgot to uh um uh to respond to a comment that you had made at the at the last hearing, which was to take a look and see, you know, if that's uh uh if 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 that's what we were able to do with this project still being financially viable. And and I just wanted to let you know, and I and I did say that the last hearing. Prior to the last hearing, I went to my client and I said, you know, can you really look at this? We we've heard their concerns. You know, can you look at this and find how how much you can reduce it and still have it be a financially viable uh project? And I don't wanna, we we had spent so many meetings on this, I asked him to just find, look at it and find the number that that where it works. And so that, what we presented to you at that last hearing, that is, uh you know, because there's significant, there's significant costs for the development. Uh, there's there's a road to put in, there's a line to bring, there's a treatment plant, so there's 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 some significant costs in this development. Uh, and obviously, the prices of things uh are not going down. Uh, it appears the interest rates are no longer going to be going down anytime soon. Um, so uh, you know, he 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 took a hard look at it and and that reduction is something that we comfortably can afford with and and this still being financially viable. Uh, it's a net reduction of eighty one bedrooms, which is a twenty percent reduction in the original numbers of bedrooms proposed. The reduction will result in less traffic on Turkey Roost Road, uh reduction in school age children, and uh the addition of affordable homes adding to Town of Monroe stock affordable housing. I've never had a client offer affordable units where it was not required by the regulations, but the applicant has done that. The application satisfies all standards for site plan review, and the applicant has addressed comments from uh zoning staff and the commission's consultants to ensure this application sat- uh satisfies your section seven point two of the regulations. Regarding the special permit, I would like to run through uh their standards now and and how we satisfy them. First, uh, the first standard is that the location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operations, the traffic involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to the type, arrangement, and capacity of streets giving access to it, and the hours of operations are such that the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. The site is located in both the RF two and MFR districts. The site was designated within these zones years prior to the filing of the application. Uh, the applicant has located the proposed use within the bounds of the MFR district and the density permitted by the regulations. Uh, in fact, the regulations permit two formulas per density, one unit per gross acre for detached single family units and two and a half units per gross acre for attached single family units. The applicant chose the less dense option at one detached single family unit per acre. The application conforms to all standards of the zoning regulations, including the MFR standards, the RF two standards, and section one point nine three of the zoning regulations regarding lots in more than one zoning district. The location and the uh the proposed dwellings, clubhouse, and majority of uses are well within the interior of the site and extremely well buffered. Open space surrounds all sides of the proposed dwellings to the north, south, east, and west, as detailed in our open space plan uh that was submitted with this application. The only exceptions are the drive coming up uh from Turkey Roost Road and a uh small stretch along the northern border that actually borders another very large vacant place. Uh, within the MFR districts alone, as I as I've stated before, the applicant proposes forty nine and a half acres of open space to be preserved to perpetuity. And the application proposes an additional thirty one acres of open space to buffer uh the use from residential neighbors. The result is the proposed development is one of the most buffered multi-family developments in the Town of Monroe, and there are, Jason, is it right here? So close this?
Close I have. Go back to the trap. Up two fold.
Right here? Right. Which one?
Sorry.
All right, there we go. I just wanted to show this development in comparison with other MFR um in higher density. So this is the, this is uh the site, here's the MFR district, and you can see over here on right satellite view, you can see all this untouched land here, and then obviously this served area and the um the area down here that's along Turkey Roost and the existing homes that are along here on Turkey Roost. And appreciate how this development and this site, it's it's, this development is completely encapsulated uh in buffer from the surrounding neighbors, which really separates it from if you go here and you see the where the development lays out, and I know you've seen, you've looked at this plan a million times, but you can really see how this is just one of the, it it's an extremely well buffered use to the neighborhood. It's in contrast to some of the other developments in town. Let me see if I can zoom out here. So this is the Sheldon Road. I went way too close. Yeah, there we go. Sheldon Road, Whitting Farms. It's in our MFR district. What you can see here is that some of these homes are literally right next door to an RF two. There's almost no buffer. It's higher density development in accordance with your standards, but there's almost no buffer between those developments and the other properties, including over on this side as well, just right directly across the street. This is Great Old Farms. Great Old Farms does have open space back here, but if you look over, things right here, we're gonna from far, this is Asta Tuck Lane, and they have houses right up against uh the public road, um whereas we are well set back. Um, here's Cutler's Farm Crossing, again. This is actually a picture uh before houses been going up, but you can see that's right along the road, right along where these other residences are. I think there's one more. Here's Hidden Knolls. Hidden Knolls has houses right here, right up up against the uh road. This is all you can see over here uh in the AR mark. And then finally, North Road. Same thing. See right here, here's the road right here, old road, and uh those houses right up against it. So if you if you look at those other developments and then you go back to ours, you can see that this MFR and this development well exceeds the buffers of those other developments. It will be one of the most well buffered um high higher density residential developments in town. Um, regarding traffic, uh I want to first note that this site was specifically selected uh by the commission in the previous iteration, but uh by by the PNC commission for the MFR district and approved to collect to cover slightly over ninety nine acres, which permits the, you know, the density that we are proposing. Under section nine point two point five point B of the re- of zoning regulations, traffic considerations are a part of that determination by the commission when the commission decided that the zone was appropriate. So when you go to a zone change, you look at traffic concerns and whether the road can handle this level of traffic. And that was done when this uh when this site was designated originally to DR and then again in the MFR. The advocate has submitted response, a report in responses from its expert, SLR Consulting, which finds that the increase in traffic because of the proposed project will have no measurable impact on the surrounding roadway system, and as such, no traffic mitigation is necessary. Uh, this commission retained its own expert to review the findings of the applicant's expert that found our findings were acceptable. And as indicated in a letter from the Monroe Superintendent Schools on this application, school bus pickup will be ma- made well within the site as to not disturb the flow of traffic on Turkey Roost Road. Mail pickup and Amazon deliveries will also occur entirely within the site, not on Turkey Roost Road. So in accordance with this standard, uh this development is in harmony with the appropriate orderly development of the district in which it is located and specifically zoned. Uh, second standard is the proposed use is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. This application is fully consistent with the with the plan of conservation and development. First, it fully complies with the zoning regulations that are set forth to affectionate the goals of the P O C D. Um, the P O C D highlighted a number of concerns regarding housing in Monroe, particularly that more than one third of the town's housing uh units are sixty years or older and the lack of diversity in house. This application addresses both those concerns. Uh, the P O C D further pointed to the lack of housing permits issued between two thousand ten and two thousand nineteen. This obviously will spur reconstruction housing in the town. The P O C D also speaks to protecting environmental resources and reducing the impacts uh through the regulations. This is a one hundred fifty seven acre piece. One of the great benefits of the MFR district regulations is it allows for housing units being created in such a manner that protects vast amounts of land for being needed to uh construct an equivalent number of housing. It allows very unique opportunity with this application where the applicant proposes ninety nine dwelling unit units, but we actually have a net gain of hundreds of trees. It's very different from traditional, what's called Euclidean zoning, uh you know, the RF one, RF two, RF three districts. Um, where, you know, if this was subdivided, you could have a road that goes here, you could have a road that comes up here, uh you could have a road that comes up from Cutler's Hill Port that could spread, you know, all over this site. Um, so you have that one extreme, then you have the other extreme of the state of affordable housing regulations, which basically says you could put this development, you know, wherever except for except for wetlands areas. So in the middle, um, you have the MFR district and which is a really a smart regulation. Because I think if you just looked at this piece as a blank slate, no zone, and looked where it's at today with what's happened to it in its past, you would look at this and you'd say, all right, this is getting developed for housing. It would be great if we could preserve this untouched land and put all the housing right here where it's already been disturbed. It would be great if there's a regulation like that. And luckily, you have it. It's the MFR regulation. It's a perfect regulation for this site. They really fit beautifully together. They're basically. They really fit beautifully together. They're basically meant for each other. Other sites, like if you had another site, like another just blank site that didn't have this history of disturbance, you would say, all right, well, if it's MFR district, all right, forty acres of land is gonna have to, the trees are gonna have to be cleared. But at least we're preserving fifty percent open space on the rest. Here, you don't have it. It's going where it's already been disturbed, disturbed, and it's preserving all this extra area beyond it. So I, I, I think it's, I, I, again, I think it's, it's really a perfect opportunity for this development, and I think it's perfect regulation for this particular piece of property. And in total, we think that this application fulfills the goals of protecting open resources, their environmental resources found in the POCD. Next standard, that the location, nature, and height of buildings and the nature and extent of landscaping and screening on the site as existing or proposed are such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. The proposed dwellings will fully conform to the building standards set forth in the regulations. It should be noted that the height standards for the MFR district match the height standards for the RF two districts, so these houses will not be any higher than other houses. But as I detailed before, this development has better buffering to adjacent land, buildings, public road than any other multifamily dwell development that I could think of in the town in a row. Next standard, that the operations of the proposed use will not be objectionable by reason of noise, fumes, smoke, dust, vibration, glare, intensity or flashing lights. This proposed use obviously has none of those. It's just a residential development. During the construction of the site, there will be normal activities that take place during developments like this, including blasting. But the applicant has submitted details regarding that process, which will take place during the beginning phase of the development. I know that was a question at the beginning. And, and, and we've agreed that that will take place during the beginning phase of the development. And such blasting is heavily regulated to ensure the protection of the surrounding neighborhood. So again, do you feel we satisfy that standard? Next standard, that safe sanitary sewage disposal will be provided by means of a public sewer line, treatment plan, or subsurface sewage disposal system subject to approval by state and or local authorities. The applicant has proposed for safe and sanitary sewage disposal or treatment plan in accordance with all applicable municipal state and federal law as required under the MFR zoning regulations. This is a system that's been reviewed extensively by P and it will all be contained within a single lot. This is a plan, I know we talked about this a lot too, that will provide real-time information to its operators to ensure that it will know immediately if an issue arises. And regardless, the applicant has provided a number of redundancies and protections to ensure the system operates appropriately at all times in all scenarios, including emergencies. Next standard is that the parking areas to be provided will be of adequate capacity for the particular use, properly located, suitably screened from adjoining residential uses and abutting properties, and that the entrance and exit drives shall be laid out so as to achieve maximum safety and acceptable levels of service. The applicant has provided that off-street parking consistent with the regulations. Proposed lawns will contain two car garages, and there's a parking area for the, next to the proposed clubhouse, which is located well within the interior of the site. The parking will be more than suitably screened from adjoining residential uses. The traffic report and the proposed site layout plan submitted by the applicant to tell the entrance and exit drives. The applicant actually submitted several options to a traffic consultant retained by the commission and the town engineer and had them select what they found to be the most acceptable option. And, and Jason submitted those plans with that option in his most recent submission. The traffic consultant retained by the commission also reviewed the findings of the applicant's traffic consultant and found the findings of the reports being acceptable. That the comments and recommendations, this is the next standard, sorry. That the comments and recommendations of town staff and consultants, as well as other involved commissions, boards, committees, and agencies have been duly considered. The applicant has worked extensively with town staff and consultants to address their comments and recommendations. Firstly, applicant filed with the inland wetlands commission and received the necessary approval on the floor of this commission. The applicant incorporated multiple recommendations by the town engineer. The chief of Monroe Volunteer EMS reviewed this application and stated in his comments that we do not have any safety concerns related to the emergency medical responses to this development. The office of the fire marshal reviewed this application and stated the project raises no issues at this time. RKG was retained to review the fiscal impact analysis provided by the applicant and its consultants. We revised our report based on some of the feedback we received from them. And while the applicant and its consultants still disagree with some of the estimates offered by RKG, RKJ's latest comments stated that it would render a, a net fiscal positive impact, as would the RKG alternative assumptions. As stated, the traffic consultant retained by the commission reviewed the responses submitted by the applicant's traffic consultants and found it to be acceptable. The applicant reached out to the Monroe Superintendent Schools to determine bus transportation for the proposed development as requested by this commission. That the superintendent agreed and stated in his comments that for safety maneuverability and efficiency purposes, a central stop at the proposed clubhouse would be established for all three tiers, elementary, middle, and high school. He made a comment about the maneuverability, and Jason has addressed that in his latest plan. And the applicant has updated plans as requested by zoning staff and addressed the remainder of their comments. Next standard, it's the last standard. Now, where applicable verification of all rules of other governmental agencies, commissions, or boards have been secured by the applicant as evidenced by certification by such agencies, commissions, or boards. As stated, the applicant received the necessary approval from Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission for this development. The state has reviewed the proposed sewage treatment plant and system. And if approved by you, the applicant would proceed with obtaining final permits and approval from the state. There are no further approvals besides yourself, obviously, from a municipal commission or board needed at this time. That the proposed use will, this is, I think actually this is the last standard. That the proposed use will not require such additional public facilities or services or create such fiscal burdens upon the town. And this is a part where greater than those which characterize uses, which do not require special exception permit. And I point that language out because technically the standard doesn't apply to this application because there are no uses within the MFR district that do not require special, uh, exception permit. They all do. It's the multifamily residential dwelling use. But all that, that, that's the only one. There's not a permitted as a right use of the MFR. I also want to point out the MFR district requires a minimum parcel size of seventy acres. It's a requirement that dwarfs other districts as far as the size needed for it. The ARR only requires ten acres. The RR district requires twenty-five acres. The HOD district requires twenty acres. So MFR districts are designated for a very large size of seventy acres and for multifamily residential dwellings at higher density. This is the type of development that is intended for this district. Again, you know, just based on this specific standard, RKG said that no matter what alternative, we would still be in net fiscal benefit. And I will say, and I know I made this point before, but these analyses don't account for the increased buying power of the resident, that the residents of this development will bring to the town. It doesn't account for the benefits of the town construction of the waterline and what that does to the values of the residential properties along the route. It doesn't take into account the conveyance taxes that will be received by the town on the initial transfers of these dwelling units and every subsequent transfer. So there's a lot of fiscal benefits beyond what was in the, the economic impact analysis. So we believe we have done everything we can to address the concerns of the departments, public, and this commission to, as best we can for this development and still make it financially viable. So in conclusion, my client has proposed development in this application through the existing regulations, which is fully compliant. There is no change of zone proposed. There is no regulation amendment needed. There is no variance needed. The MFR district regulations permit either a density of ninety-nine units of the detached dwellings or two hundred forty-seven units of attached dwellings. That's just the MFR regulation, what that permits. My client, for this site, that, that, if you apply the regulations to the site, my client has chosen far less dense option. The application, the MFR regulation is the best path towards the development of this large piece of private property, which is entitled to be developed. My client has spent a significant amount of money being a good steward of the site, removing the violations, restoring land, paying taxes over decades. It's cost him upwards of five million of his own money, and he's worked with the town every step of the way. And has chosen the option to work within the regulations, which were specifically placed on this site by the commission. Beyond that, in this proposed application, he's offering benefits to the town well beyond the requirements of the regulation. These benefits, these concessions, they cost real money, and we feel that it's, how it's currently designed is the only way for this project to be financially viable within the scope of these regulations. So with that, respectfully urge you to support this application for development of the site and to complete the final chapter in the restoration of the site as a true asset to the town. Happy to answer any other questions, but otherwise, that's, I appreciate you. Go through all your standards, make sure, address them.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, if not, then you're ready to close the hearing?
Okay, thank you.
Well, we'll see you.
Thank you so much.
Moving on. We have deliberations and determinations. It's nine twenty. We can deliberate on Spring Hill. We would like to.
We take a quick recess?
Tom Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission is now back in session. For the regular meeting of April eighteenth, it is nine twenty-nine PM. Looked to record show that departure of Commissioner Leon Ambrosi. There by.
Dominic Panitia to replace Leon, and we already have Dominic Fermino seated to replace Bruno.
All right, so for deliberations, we have five members. So we're gonna start with deliberations on two oh five Springfield Road. So there's going to be no blasting.
Yep.
Corner windows on the north and the east are gonna be removed, correct?
Yeah, they don't need second floor windows.
All of the northern windows and half of the eastern windows.
That's what we discussed. I mean, the commission didn't tell me.
Conditions of approval. We're gonna remove one to two parking spaces in that corner.
I was gonna write it one, two, if possible.
Yeah, if, if they can. I mean, he said that he can keep, he can get rid of one.
Main issue is hours of operation.
You requested six AM to ten PM as a starting point of discussion.
What do we normally do? Does we do this?
Uh, I, I get, I'm, I'm not quite, I, because I don't, it is within your purview. I had read the regulations. I don't know if you've done this for an industrial zone, because obviously that's different. I mean, each issue should be taken into consideration. But I don't know off the top of my head. I could do the research if we wanted to have that for the next meeting, but if you were looking to vote tonight, I, I just don't have that.
Well, we can do hours of operation, but then we can also do trucks and delivery. It could be two different windows, right?
Right.
So we can do hours of operation from, you know, if it was six to ten, we can also say with no truck deliveries between or after seven PM if we wanted to.
Or forklifts. I would include that with the delivery.
Forklifts should be indoors in this place, right?
Yeah, there's no outdoor storage here, so it should really all be indoors.
Because the truck's gonna back up to the dock.
But if you're driving those forklifts around, they have the, they have the backup alarm.
Yeah.
But inside.
Inside the building.
Not sure that'll contain the noise, though.
You would think it would dampen some of it.
Do you have a gate?
Yeah.
There's a gate, then, well, maybe a gate may, may not be a gate.
Oh, they're saying there's gonna be a gate.
It's gonna be closed.
They said there's definitely gonna be a gate.
Said a swing gate. What exactly is a swing gate? So?
They showed a picture of it. It's basically like the triangle.
It's locked, right?
It can be, it can be locked. So I mean, that's something that we can make specific, and if it is locked, then the fire marshal just wants it either be a knock box or a pad. So I mean, again, we can word it as provide a gate at the entrance, subject to the review and approval of the fire marshal. We can say provide a locked gate at the entrance, you know, subject to.
Locked gates, I don't believe. Locked or shut? Well, the police doesn't want it locked.
Okay, so fire marshal, the police chief, I mean, we could, and, and we could work that out unless you guys have something, you know, specific that you want.
Like I said, the building next door to that one, and I drove by it again to verify, has a gate that, that goes down at the end of their day. It's yellow, and I don't know whether it's locked or not, but it's not something somebody's gonna drive through.
Yeah, like a train crossing gate.
Kind of, yeah. And that's, that's, I think, in kind of the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish at this particular location. You know, we wanna keep vagrants from going back there, turning around, or hanging out, whatever. I don't, you know, you're gonna have to drive off-road to get to the back of it.
Leave there's a gate at Caruba, blocking people from getting into the back after hours. Caruba, right, over on, so like, we do it all the time. And obviously, the fire marshal and police had some sort of way. So, you know.
The fire, yes, but sometimes no. Don't have bulk cutters or.
They have remote control that you could give it to the fire and police.
Well, the police don't need to, so that's the difference. Police don't need to necessarily get a car back there. The fire do, because the fire trucks actually are what put out the fires or need to get on a roof or whatever. A police car could always park right outside the gate and the officer could walk on foot. If that were the case. The fence, so I'm less about landscaping. Yeah, I'm just definitely with the windows, definitely making sure the fence is gray. I know you had mentioned that.
And so it's gray vinyl fence to be installed along the northern property line with vegetation installed on the residential side of the fence. To address your concern.
That way the fence is high. Aw, man, that was funny.
What do you guys think about the, the height of the trees? They were twelve foot. I mean, can we do at least eighteen?
It's tall. Yeah, I think it's gonna be difficult to plant. It's gonna be disruptive on the, on the soil and even also take.
It's really hard with this, the point being that they made it is really hard with a, a established vegetated landscape because the root zone has spread and is underneath. So when you install something of a larger root ball, you really need to go in, expose the roots, split them, burlap them, you know, just to make sure you don't kill an established tree. So like they said, it is kind of this balance between the two of you wanna get something in there that has some sort of like meat to it at the beginning of it, but is small enough that isn't gonna be an impact to the existing vegetation that's already established.
And twelve is higher than normal anyway. Usually it's five to six that get planted.
Our code is eight to ten, I think, for evergreen, so, um, yeah, they're trying to, they're trying to put in something that that is gonna have some sort of impact.
So we have to let the record show that Commissioner Ambrosi has returned.
Is he allowed to in the middle of once deliberations have started? Of left of the DS. Cause I know like a whole minute, I have to be there the whole time in order to be seated.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much you, you've missed. I, I mean, you have to hear the whole public hearing, so technically. That's all you need to do.
Dominic is very willingly.
Will be seated.
Yeah. All right, as long as we're allowed to.
So Commissioner Ambrosi is now seated again.
Yes, and Commissioner Panitia is no longer seated.
You're out done.
Always gotta complicate.
Okay, so we went, while you were gone, we went through the conditions of approval on Spring Hill.
Right, we said no windows up on the second floor or corner and make sure they have the gate and remove the parking lot.
Or the parking windows on both sides.
They have a full back end and then like half of the face.
Yeah, we're talking about
about that easement.
Yeah, it's actually, so I don't have the easement language, but the survey is between, I think it was Stephen Weiner and Trumbull Printing Company is actually who the easement is in agreement with. And the language of it didn't specifically say access easement. It had a different portion of it, so I'd have to actually pull the deed and look at the easement language, know exactly what was permitted or not permitted in it. But the applicant had said the gray change basically makes it almost not operable. And he did a quick calculation at sixteen percent. Once you start to add in like vertical curves and things of that nature, it actually makes that slope even more. So just from a constructability sense, it would be hard to do. But your, your question specifically related to the easement, I don't have an answer to that because I'd need the actual language of easement.
Right, so would we be able to look at that and see? Because I know the neighbors were concerned about the.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't enter anything new into the record. We close the public hearing.
So we couldn't.
That's a question? No, I'm saying that we couldn't require them to put the fence up there.
I guess the question is, can we tell them that we want a fence on the easement?
I could look at the.
Depends on the language of the easement. Yeah, so we don't need reported.
No, I know that.
We just want to know.
So what you can do on easement, I don't, I don't know that, so that's why.
I can provide guidance.
Yeah.
You can answer into the, the record, but I can look and.
We could put it in the condition that if the easement states.
Okay.
If, if available, the fence should go out and around the corner through that easement if, if allowable.
Alright, so we hit on the hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, we were waiting for you to work. But yeah, I thought you would. So they were saying.
Well, we didn't like, but we talked.
Six A M. to ten P M. We were thinking earlier for delivery.
Yeah, doing like separate, you can do an hours of operation timeframe, but then also do a delivery timeframe that's smaller.
Cut the deliveries out early.
Yeah.
Seven P M. or six P M. or something like that. What's feeling like you will?
I think. I think seven to seven is, is reasonable.
I think for deliveries.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, before that's too early and after that, you're getting into nighttime.
Yeah, no, I think that, you know. So what are you talking about for hours of operation? But that's less important.
I don't think that that should be any different. I don't think we should convolute that.
Huh? It's all indoors. There's no outside store.
You think hours of operation should be seven to seven also?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You should.
I don't really even know that there needs to be. I don't want to restrict it.
Restrict hours of.
That's the thing, because they might want twenty-four hours where, you know, you got a night guy doing a shift, moving things around.
What are you doing? I would like to see what we did on other, other stuff that what we did. We've done this before. I mean, we've done it as a, as a commission to.
Yeah, but mostly for outside operations and like the class.
No, we did it for anything that had to do with industrial. We did it.
Well, they're not taking in deliveries. We're talking about cars coming in and parking and potentially people working inside. I don't think that's too intrusive of a, of a act.
Right. I don't either.
Literally talking about somebody getting out of their car and walking into work.
Alright, so you have the Kathleen to seven to seven.
I was still a little confused. Is that for truck, that we're saying for truck delivery hours at seven to seven? And for what? You want and for what?
We don't want to hear about.
We don't want.
Forklift doesn't apply because that's inside.
Or out, you, outdoor use.
Outdoor, I, I would think that we would just cut down any outdoor use. Which is only delivered. You say if the guy's going out there, what that's.
They're not going to go out. Why would they go out with the forklift? They have those bays where the trucks.
Yeah, have indoor forklifts.
Yeah. There's no outdoor store.
You drive the forklift out.
Yeah.
It's got a loading dock.
Yeah.
Right. What about outside storage?
There's no outdoor storage.
I know that, but they're not.
Because there was space.
It's not on the.
Everything is parking. It's all, it's open. It's septic. Alright, so you'll draft a.
What about the lighting situation? They were concerned about the lighting.
I think they agreed to comply with.
And that little, that, that shield too is a good idea that they talked about. To divert the lighting.
I think we talked about having.
A house side shield on them. And I do, I do have that in there. Do you want me to quickly go through my, the list?
Yes.
That I currently have at the moment. So the first is provide a gate at the entrance, subject to review and approval of the fire marshal and police chief.
Fire marshal.
Providing outside shields to the pole lights adjacent to the residential properties. So basically he offered, you know, even though he's saying that it's, you know, downward facing and whatnot, he's actually going to provide a physical barrier, which will help, you know, block that light. The dumpster enclosure shall be enlarged to accommodate a third container. Additional notes shall be added to the drawings noted that the existing vegetation is to remain and how it will be protected during construction. Adherence to the town engineer's report dated four seventeen twenty-four, including the posting of a bond in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Provide gray vinyl fence to be installed along the northern property line with vegetation installed on the residential side. If the easement allows, the fence shall extend further and terminate at the property line. Relocate one or two, if possible, parking spaces at the northeast, at the north northeast corner of the property. From, I guess, I'll change that wording to make it clear. Remove all windows on the rear north side of the building and fifty percent of the windows on the east side of the building. Truck delivery and outdoor vehicle hours of operation, except passenger vehicles, shall be seven A M. to seven P M. Does that make sense?
Height of the video camera?
Well, I, I, I used to do something that I, I watched. I don't think that they, as far as if people think that the video camera is intrusive to them, I don't think it can go over the property. I think that the property should much be.
Observe the property.
Observe the property itself.
Then the, the boundaries of their own property.
Right, but I'm saying that I, I think that's a law anyway that we're.
I don't think their, their goal is to be videoing the neighborhood, you know?
I don't think that's what they want to do. They don't want to be able to just make sure that they're secure.
They're probably not even have one on the entire lot. They'll probably just have it on.
And just to be clear, there's no other landscaping conditions besides the fence. You decided.
Now, we want to add more trees?
They need to add more trees.
They did add some.
Doing two lines of.
There's, they're, they're staggering. They're like zigzagging it. Because I think, again, that's the space that they have and they, they don't have every single tree located either. So like, there's going to be some shifting of this in the, you know.
Like a, a tree or two, if they do remove that parking space there.
We can, we can say.
Some sort of tree, because that's really, I think, where the line of sight is going to be. So they diagonal, yeah. If where they remove the spot, if they put some sort of tree there. Something evergreen, so it keeps.
Yeah, yeah.
Buffering throughout the year.
Okay, can I make anything else?
You know how there's like open space between the two properties that's owned by the town, right?
Uh huh.
And is this unprecedented where we could plant? Or they could plant trees there or no?
No, I think so.
It's not. Yeah, it's not their property.
Property can't do it.
The town would have to do it.
Town would have to.
I don't know if it's actually between them and residents.
It is.
Is that, that goes between them and the residents?
Well, it not, not the people in the northeast corner, but like directly north. That's where there's like a little parcel between them and one of the neighbors that were here.
I don't even think we can require the town to. Alright.
That's a good thought.
Alright, so we'll draft an approval.
Yeah, and I have, I have most of it done already, so I'll be able to circulate it out for this commission and then as I, I.
Do you want to vote tonight? Do you want to vote once we have the approval? Hey, buddy?
I'm fine voting tonight.
Kathleen, what do you say?
Alright, let me just read this one more time then. So that when the motion is made, the motion can be made for, as outlined. Take this out. Alright, provide a gate at the entrance, subject to the review and approval of the fire marshal and the police chief. Provide house side shields to the pole lights adjacent to the residential properties. The dumpster enclosure shall be enlarged to accommodate a third container. Additional notes shall be added to the drawings noted that the existing vegetation is to remain and how it will be protected during construction. Adherence to the town engineer's report dated four seventeen twenty-four, including the posting of a bond in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Provide gray vinyl fence to be installed along the northern property line with vegetation installed on the residential side. If the easement allows, the fence shall extend further and terminate at the property line. Relocate one or two, if possible, parking spaces from the, from the north northeast corner of the property. Add additional evergreen landscaping at the northeast corner of the property. Add additional evergreen landscaping at the northeast corner of the parking lot where spaces previously were designated. Add additional evergreen landscaping at the northeast corner of the parking lot where spaces previously were designated. Remove all windows on the rear north side of the building and fifty percent of the proposed windows on the east side of the building. Truck delivery and outdoor vehicle hours of operation, except passenger vehicles, shall be from seven A M. to seven P M.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to approve SCP twenty twenty-four day I shall achieve the aforementioned condition. When confliction approved. Have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and we'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Smarter Glenn O' yes.
Tomlin, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Weston, yes.
Okay, the S E P passes unanimously, two oh five Springfield. Thank you, everyone. We'll go on to deliberation on Turkey Roost. So seated for this. Dominic again?
Yeah, he's still seated, yeah.
Okay.
Seated for the whole.
Alright, so this application, we've seen them comply with pretty much everything asked. Clear the road can safely handle the traffic. We know that from not only their consultant, but our consultant. There'll be a net positive economic impact to the town. Not quite sure what, but both their consultant and our consultant agreed to that. They did come back with a net reduction of eighty-one bedrooms, but pretty much on their own. And they giving us an additional thirty-one acres of open space. So how are the commissioners leaning on this application? Can I move?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do like that they've kind of worked with us, came back and reduced a lot of the amount of bedrooms. I definitely see what could potentially go into this property as being a lot, a lot more than, a lot denser, a lot more.
Yeah.
Of an impact on the surrounding neighbors and the town. I think this is probably close to the best case scenario as opposed to it just, you know, becoming a part.
But yeah, versus all apartments, which. And eight thirty G also.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I do like they put the sidewalks all the way through because, you know, kids go trick or treating at Great Oak Farms all the time. I'm sure this will be a, a new local spot where. Wow, yeah, there's a lot more kids trick or treating at Great Oak Farms than live at Great Oak Farms. I'll tell you that much. But yeah, I, I think it's, it, it's the best we're going to be able to do here, so. Dominic in favor.
Tomlin, some questions? How are you leaning?
I kind of, I agree with Ryan. I, I'm just curious, when, when exactly did this property become M F R?
First in thirteen.
What the attorney had explained, and that agrees with our research as well, is basically the entire zoning designations changed in twenty thirteen. Every single name for every single zoning designation, there was a big rewrite of the regulations. However, in this specific lot, it went from a design residential zone to an M F R zone. And the like intent of both of those zones was basically multifamily. There may have been small differences from, you know, one to the other. But basically, the intent is the same. So it was a multifamily designated zone prior to twenty thirteen, and that goes back even further than that. So when we talk about the third twenty thirteen change, it basically just changed the name alone, but it was a very, very similar zoning regulations. So prior to that, I'm not exactly quite sure when the D R was done, but it was, it was a significant amount of time.
But it's been a while and this has been designated for.
It has been zoned as a multifamily zone for quite some time, yes.
And that was just really my only question.
What are you thinking?
I think, you know, when you look at this application compromise best describes, you know, what's been brought to the table from the applicant and all the supporting information that, that's been brought forth. I mean, I think that initially, when you hear that this many homes are going to get built in Monroe, you know, the knee jerk emotional decision is no, we can't have it. It's not good for anything. It's not good for the roads, the schools, everything else. And whether it's going to be a fiscal impact, positive or negative, it's kind of nor here, nor there. I don't think it's going to be positive. If it's neutral or slightly negative, I guess that would be the, the best case scenario. You know, I'm trying to just keep the facts in hand. I mean, planning and zoning back in two thousand thirteen decided that this was, you know, inadequate use for this space. We decided that we're going to make this M F R. So the applicant comes in here with a project that perfectly defines what you would put in an M F R zone. So having said that, on top of the fact that they've opted for a lower density development from what they could do, and if we're to deny this, it gets brought to court, we could have a much higher density build on our hands, rightfully so, in the applicant's behalf. So that remains to be seen and we could potentially kick the can down the road, only to have a worse outcome for, for Monroe. You know, the other thing is with the road, you know, I've driven up and down it a bunch of times since this has started and really thought about the traffic. It's not a perfect road by any means. And as we've been advised, if we decide to force a traffic study audit, depending on the, the findings of that, that could end up becoming a problem for Monroe to repair the road. And if this gets built or not, we're still left with the obligation to take care of the road from a financial standpoint. It could be very expensive. So we've got to be careful what we ask for there. Because if we approve this, it never happens. We're stuck fixing the road. So that could also be a another negative to this. And, you know, I think as a commission, we've done an excellent job promoting useful revenue generating commercial development for the last few years. And there's no question that the project right here may not be positive, but it is going to be one of the bigger residential developments that this commission has dealt with in a long time. That's possibly going to come to fruition. So there needs to be a, a balance there that we haven't really had to deal with. So, you know, from a personal standpoint, I, I put that aside. I just, I feel like, you know, they've met all the obligations and they've, they've compromised tremendously on, on what they've, what they're actually able to do here. So it is something that I'm leaning, you know, to a positive approval on.
Do you want to go over the conditions that you have?
Um, some of them have been met, just based on the last kind of influx of information that we've gotten over the last couple of days. But I just need to confirm that the left turn lane that's shown on the latest set of drawings is, is what is, was agreed upon by our traffic team and study. And if not, there's a way for us to make that a condition of the approval to make sure it's in there. Making sure I just make note of the highway work permit. Replacing the six, uh, single family units. That was addressed as part of the last one, but we'll put some notes. I don't necessarily believe it'll be a condition, but we'll definitely put some notes in there related to the deed restriction that's required as part of the conditions of some of the processes afterwards. All underground fuel or similar storage tanks should exist, shall be removed from the site with a certification provided at the commission of such removals. I would just like to add something similar to that in there just because there's some things on site that I don't know what's. Um, I would just like to add something similar to that in there, just because there's some things on site that I don't know what's still there. There's some buildings and whatnot to, to be done. I just want to have that be in here. As specified by the applicant, the project shall be served by public water supply. The site may similarly be supplied by other public utilities, which may be required to be installed under and, and within the travel way of Turkey Roost Road and other town streets. The permise shall, upon the completion of all such surfaces, installation, restore and repave overlay applicable portions of the town streets, including Turkey Roost Road course and tire width for a length beginning from the initial excavation point of extension to a point one hundred and fifty feet beyond the end of such extension. Such overlay replacing shall meet the standards of the public works department. Um, I wanna just go over that with engineering a little bit to define, I believe the public works only wants them to do like half the road because of the way that it is being installed, but I just want to make sure that that wording is appropriate to them um for that. Um, they had talked about it being developed in phases. So should the development of the site be contemplated in sections or phases, the developer shall convey that information to the planning zoning department prior to the initiation of work in the form of a plan clearly delineating the section lines. Sections used for sales and marketing shall coincide with those filed with the town and no arbitrary deviations will be permitted. Uh, that usually also is gonna just get worked out as they apply for zoning compliance certificates. If they're doing it in phases, they'll apply for it in phases. Um, but I just want to make sure that it's really clear on everybody's plans of what's within the scope of each one of the plans. Um. All road and sightline approvals as determined by the director of public works shall be completed before the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So again, they're just trying to check it. Internal roads or driveways leading to the town street shall be paved to a driveway point of access to a dwelling unit before unit um is issue a certificate of occupancy. Basically, we just want to make sure if they do this in phases, they have to pave a certain portion of the road and make sure that's a condition in the approval to make sure that can happen before they give C O. Uh, no topsoil shall be removed from the site until the completion of either the section of the project. Excess materials may be authorized for removal by the director of public works, but only after determining the material is excess and not needed for the completion of work. Uh, we just talked about previously about um, they are gonna potentially crush some things on site. We want to make sure that stays on site. We want to make sure any topsoil that's there stays on site. If anything goes out, I just want to make sure that there's a way for that to be regulated from the town, and they're just not able to remove material because that's something that we had discussed about. Um, one thing for consideration is um the planning zoning commission is also acting for uh architectural review because they're single family dwelling units. We had kind of talked about this once before. So the way that they're showing the plans, everything is um in the same design vernacular. Does this commission want to have something as a condition of approval about once completed and delivered by the developer? No change, addition, or other exterior alterations may be made. The restriction of this condition shall apply similarly to other structures uh like the clubhouse. Um, and it be placed in the seller's offering and closing documents. That's a condition that was in the original Turkey Roost. Um, approval, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, but since it was in the original approval, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
I understand that.
Basically, it's saying like, it, it, you know, you have a design vernacular that's for the community. It's, it's a, it has a homeowners situation, homeowners association, which they may cover in their own documents anyway. Um, but basically saying that one person can't paint their house pink, one person can't do something crazy on their house, that the design vernacular for the entire community is gonna remain the same, and once it's kind of turned over from the developer, it can't really be um redesigned in a way that doesn't meet with that design vernacular. Now, I'm assuming they're gonna have their own H O A documents that are really gonna kind of take some of that stuff into place. Um, but again, this was a condition in the original approval, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Do you want me to keep it, not keep it?
I'm standing.
Let's say, let's not keep it. Let's not keep it.
You have a condition of approval, anyone like?
Um, just uh going back on the one about the paving um to, and the, the line about paving.
Yeah, so the, they were going through several options for the left turn lane to get into the driveway, the town engineer and the traffic.
No, no, you were talking about how um uh during the construction, uh paving from the town street.
I just want to make sure it's, it's very clear what the town expects for them to replace after they make the line. So it's not necessarily, and again, I want to talk to the town engineer and get his eh, eh, exactly what he wants. So instead of making a three foot cut down the road and then just replacing the.
Not that one.
Okay, keep going. Give me another one.
Like a three line, three things before, conditions prior to what you originally, what you last said, the one about how paving from the main street to the houses, the dwelling unit?
Oh, yes.
Is that going to, is that wording going to unintentionally then include the emergency access road?
That's a good que, that's a good question. We can make that a condition of approval. Um.
It's gonna stay travel.
Oh, yeah, no, it's gonna stay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the language you have there isn't going to make it where if somebody were really later, it would be required to be paved.
Understood. Um. Internal roads and driveways leading to the town street. With the exception of the emergency access road shall be paved. Um, okay.
You have a condition of approval?
Is there any restrictions on the crushing, like the time of day?
They would have to comply with their own regs, and I can make reference to that specific uh regulation items. There's certain hours of operations that they could do on Monday through Friday. They can't do it on federal holidays. That is in our code, and I can just make reference to it. Um, I also have a, I also have a couple more, which is just kind of our standards of like, and they have some of this on their drawings. Mailboxes need to be accepted by the postal service. You know, they have where they want it to be, but the postal service needs to do it. Um, utility transformer locations, no. That could be a condition of whether that gets approved. The fire main and the fire hydrants have to get approved by the fire marshal prior to those final locations. Um, the H O A documents. Normally, our town attorney reviews the H O A documents, but that's because it's in like the age restricted zones where like there's very specific conditions of what needs to be included in there. I'm inclined to not make that a condition of this approval because there's really nothing for him to review. Um. I have to think about what affordable language, affordable housing language is gonna be in the resolution.
Yes, you have to, language about the affordability, um, you know, the eighty percent of the state of meeting, whichever is lower, but we'll do that. I don't know if you mentioned the open space uh in there that it's um I think there's, there's gotta be some sort of deed restriction or.
Yes.
For, to ensure the open space describing what that entails. I think it's gonna be owned by the applicant or homeowners association.
Correct, but it's deeded to the town.
It's, it's not gonna be deeded to the town, or that, or there could be an easement to the town.
I have to see how the M F R district writes that up. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it could be a.
Don't forget it addresses deeding to the town.
It does in like the subdivision regulations. I have to think, I, I'll, I'll look into it, but yeah, we'll figure out what that legal instrument is.
Yeah, something for the open space, and I don't know if you mentioned the deep approval of the wastewater treatment somewhere before C Os, you know, something. Yeah.
Yeah, we can. Uh, the blasting letter, I'll add into there because they did talk about how they were gonna blast. Um. Make a note about there being a, a condition of there being no gate at the emergency access. I think that's what we all agree to, but if we want to make that a specific question to call out. Um, and that the emergency access needs to be plowed. Um, I would like that in writing for the future.
It, it was sort of, they, they made a representation. Remember, there's a dead end where they said, we're gonna put a single family house up here. Um, but we, we could put a, we could put something bigger, but it's only gonna be a single family. And that'll stop people trespassing from coming in. I don't think that was part of this application. But they made certain representations about what it would be, and I don't know if you even want to mention that.
Yeah, that's really up to the commission if they feel.
Well, what, what happened there?
During their presentation, when they were showing the map and they, they were showing, we have a um, we, we have a lot. One, we bought a whole bunch of extra property, including, you know, property, a lot that's up on a dead end. I forget the name of the street, and they said that's gonna be a single family.
Oh, uh, yeah, off of, so they're gonna subdivide the property. There's that four acre lot. They did talk about developing that into a single family home.
Not part of this project.
Yeah, you could just not address it whatsoever. I thought that they were representing it, and that's gonna help trust, not, you know, keep people from trespassing and whatever. And, you know, public had raised, I didn't, you could ignore it, but it was just something major. I didn't know if you want to say anything about it in, in the.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, water testing was discussed. Is there any conditions that want to be brought?
That was already done.
Oh, that's resolved. All right, okay. Any other conditions that?
No, I, you, you went by him, him, and then him, and then we went into doing conditions. You didn't even want, during deliberation, is what I wanted to say.
We're not deliberating.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying to you is that.
You didn't deliberately, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, we did.
Yeah, you did.
It's a little bit, and I think.
You had a condition, yeah. I have issues, like I said, with the road. The reason why I have issues with the road is because it's a horrible road. I asked for a safety audit to be done on the road, but the reason being is because we're adding a lot more traffic to the road. It's a dangerous road. Their consultant even said that he knew that was problematic with the road. And you're only, not only adding the traffic from the development, but you're adding traffic from deliveries. You're having traffic from oil truck deliveries. You're adding traffic. So you're adding a ton of traffic to that road. And everybody says, well, you know, well, maybe the town will have to fix the road, but the road is unsafe, and the town should look into it and fix the road. The road's a narrow road, has a lot of blind spots, and I have an issue with that. You need one accident or one person get killed or badly hurt on that road, then, you know what I mean? If the road is windy, I mean, if the road going down to Fan Hill, it's horrible. It's horrible getting to Fan Hill. And even the sightline issues on Fan Hill, you know, you all realize it's a sightline. She's here. Not that how we're gonna address them. I don't know how we're gonna address them. They said maybe they'll cut the trees down or whatever, but that's what I'm saying. You're not only adding traffic that's going into development. You're adding oil trucks, you're adding delivery trucks, you're adding Amazon trucks, you're adding more than what they're adding in because they're only taking into what the development has, but you don't take into consideration the rest of the traffic that's gonna come with it. And I don't think that, you know, that's why we should have done our own traffic study instead of a peer review, because we could have maybe got into adding on all the other traffic that's going in there. I mean, you're adding, you know, ninety nine homes. That means that each one of those units, they're not gassing, they're not gonna be gassed here, so they're gonna have oil deliveries. So you're adding ninety nine oil trucks onto the road. And you're adding ninety nine Amazon trucks are going on the road. So you're adding like three hundred, the way I look at it, but maybe not every day, but you're adding more traffic to that road. And that road's a dangerous road, so that's where I stand. And that's why I had to make sure that I put out there. That's all I have.
So Kathleen, you'd rather hold off on a vote on this?
I would. I would like to, this is a, this is a little bit of a con, I just want to make sure the resolution is tight. I would like legal to review it. Um, I would like our town engineer to review it to make sure there's, you know.
So you'll draft an approval for next?
Which will be March ninth, I mean, May ninth, um, because we are going to cancel the May second meeting and reschedule it to May ninth, May.
You may not need one. Okay, very good. So moving on to um other business, meeting minutes. Sarah, are you there? Sarah Stroud? We're straight there, at center. We need minutes.
I agree.
Sarah, are you there? Okay, well, it is important, but um, we're missing our minute meeting, make, meeting, uh, meeting minutes. The last, the last meeting. Please. I'd like to, you know, once Sarah comes back, maybe you could uh, Kathleen, you can address that. Okay, we have one um request for a bond release, SCP twenty nineteen dash show one file number one six six two seventeen Enterprise Drive. Can you give us some background on that?
Yeah, so seventeen Enterprise Drive uh was a warehouse facility. It was a two phase process. Um. Uh, they had two buildings, one in the front, one in the rear. They had original bond of forty five thousand dollars. This commission um in twenty twenty reduced it down to um a partial release of twenty thousand dollars. Um, and therefore uh, just to hold it for the back portion of it. Uh, we've gone and been a site that we actually have some comments about their E D A signs and things of that nature. The applicant was uh very accommodating and made every single request that we had, and now we're back for the request to release the bond. Uh, we both went to Wetlands and uh P and Z, uh, so we just recently released the bond, so this is the last one. He has a certificate of occupancy. Um, it's been signed off on everybody else. We just wanted to make sure it was stabilized. Spring has happened. It's been a, it's a stable site, and so I take no objection to releasing the bond.
The challenge and a motion to uh release bond.
I'll make a motion to release the bond as uh for S E P two zero one nine dash zero one file one six six two.
All right, a motion by Westland, second. Second by Ambrose. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I am against. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any correspondents?
Uh, we do not. The only thing I really have is just that we are canceling the May second meeting and rescheduling it to May ninth.
Any commissioner reports?
Uh, Thomas Noonan, our new zoning enforcement officer, is doing a wonderful, wonderful job. Um, we will get him in front of the commission, and he will give you an updated high level.
We got our next meeting, right?
We can do that. I can make that request for me.
Oh, I got a question to ask you, Kathleen.
You think black and signs?
Yes.
As he could.
Kathleen, what's going on with uh Josie Ring?
I'm sorry, say that.
Josie Ring, ninety seven Josie Ring Road.
I would have to talk to him. I don't know that off the top of my head.
That was the one that the house was being built on. And it was supposed to be a thousand square foot house.
I've been asked about that a lot.
Turn, it turned into be like the enormous house.
I'll bring that up there.
It's, nothing is going on there. It's just a shell. It's like, nothing.
Hmm, that's an accessory drawing one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was the first one.
You need to take a look at that.
Yeah, I'll talk to a building too.
Will, will he be coming in monthly?
No.
No?
Uh, we said, we talked maybe every six weeks, so like at once every like three meetings, we thought that maybe he could come. Um, we talked to him, uh, Chairman O'Reilly had talked to him a little bit. I'm just about like what this commission expects, and if there's anything else you guys want to add, but we basically just said like the high level of like the big stuff, the contentious stuff, the violations that are happening in town. Um, but if there's anything else in particular you guys are interested in seeing, like tracking accessory dwelling units or, you know, things of that nature, that's something we can do as well.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other correspondence or any other report?
Um, I have one question, just uh, can you follow up on why apparently that resident sent a bunch of, two emails and didn't get a response from anybody?
Yes. The part of it is, is like the volume of calls and emails we get are very, very high at the moment. And we are addressing the stuff statutorily. We can't not address. When stuff comes in, it has to be circulated out. Um, people at the counter, we're trying to do scheduling and things of that nature. Um, so if that email did come in and, and we were in compliance with the notification, we do our very, very best to call people back, but sometimes there are things that, that slip through.
Any other reports? Sarah Stroud, are you there? Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we need the minutes from uh the uh last meeting. Could you have that for us for the on next meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Also, the moment from this meeting, you have an extra week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other um commissioner reports? Not, Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Condon, second by Westland. Yeah, by John. Seventeen, yeah, thank you for standing late.